We're gonna go ahead and start. It's a couple minutes late, but we do have four council members here. So that is a good thing. We have asked Linda Walton to give us our invocation, after which our police chief, Brian William, will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our dear Father in heaven, we are so grateful to have the right to be here. We are grateful for our Bill of Rights that allows us to assemble, to have free speech, and a number of other things that we really, really value, Father. And so we thank you for that. We thank you for this great team of people that have put this meeting together, and also for all of those that are attending. Father, we pray that your Spirit will be with us because we are facing problems on a local level, like county level, a state level, national level, international. And you know what that's like, to work with a bunch of different problems and find solutions. Very, very challenging. We need more angels. We need more people doing community service. We need more people being educated to find out what the real problems are. And Father, we need those things, and only you can do that. And so we pray tonight, Father, that your Spirit will be here, that you will give wisdom to everyone making decisions, that you will, as people are making comments, remind them that we're supposed to be nice, and that when it's all said and done, we will have done the right thing, Father. And we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Linda.
Please rise. Repeat the Pledge of Allegiance with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated.
Our first order of business is unscheduled public appearances. If you have a comment related to an issue that is not on the agenda, now would be the time to come up and make that comment. We have three minutes to let us know what you think and why you think that. We're always willing to listen. So anyone that has a comment about an item that's not on the agenda, you're welcome
I just have a quick question. I've been noticing that there's a lot of garbage along the roads, and I would like to make that go away. And aside from picking it up myself, which I try to do, I'd like to get some input on that at some point about state road versus city road versus driveway, who's in charge of what, and what we can do to fix it, because it looks awful.
Thank you, Linda Walton. Anyone else? Okay, we have two items on our consent agenda: approval of meeting minutes and cell tower agreement.
Mayor, I'd like to just poll item number 2B.
Okay. Is there a motion on the meeting minutes?
I move that we accept the consent agenda, including item A only.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item 2A on the consent agenda. All in favor?
Let's see. Hi.
Hi.
The voting working now, or?
Okay, so there we go.
Well, I'm not hooked up yet.
But you voted yes?
Yeah.
I vote aye.
Okay, so Tim is the aye on that one. All right, now item 2B.
Yeah, I'd just like to get a little bit more input. This is dealing with the cell towers. They're over here behind Myers Beach. I know I've sent a couple of emails. So I believe our attorney, Tim Merrill, you'd kind of done some, you know, negotiation with them. It appears that this lease doesn't come up for 10 years, and so I'm a little curious why they're trying to get 10 years ahead. And then the monthly fee, I understand they're doing some negotiations, hey, if you do now and renew for another 30 years, we'll give you $75,000. But in some research, I've looked at our cell towers, we have three carriers. So when you're looking at a cell tower, one carrier, there's usually a fee, but if you get three carriers on, you're usually one of the higher-paid cell towers. And I think about $650 is what we're negotiating to sign for 30 years with a 4% increase. Tim, maybe you can kind of maybe give us a little background. My research is showing that we're selling this a little short, that we probably should be getting, you know, $45,000 to $60,000 a year coming in on that. Now, I understand the lease doesn't come up for 10 years, and so they could be locked in for 10 years, but I just want to understand a little bit about your negotiations there.
So the city council certainly has the ability tonight to choose whether to approve or deny, or go back to the drawing table. If you think that we're being sold short, then we could certainly go back and try to negotiate better terms if you feel like there are better terms to be had here. This is a continuation of the lease we currently have. For the last 20 years, they've been paying monthly rent, and it increases by 4% annually. And so this was a lease extension. The reason they're coming 10 years before, all I can say, because I can only tell you what they've told me, is that in their industry, they have to plan out the future this well in advance, just in all of their commercial dealings and contracts. And so when dealing with municipalities, we're two-thirds through the lease, and so they approached the city and said, would you be interested in renewing the lease? And so that's what's being proposed for the council decision. If you feel like this is not a good deal, then we can say no.
So with that, Tim, did they offer the $75,000 as part of the negotiation, or is that something you're saying, hey, if we're gonna do that, we'd like to have some money upfront? Was that just their first offer that we're kind of jumping at? Is that what we're understanding?
No, the negotiations have lasted many, many months. And originally, they approached the city last year with three alternative offers. What the city desired was to have continuing money. So rather than just having one lump sum to then give them essentially a perpetual easement or something, we desired to have continual monthly rent payments so that we can have that in our budget. Because if we get one-time money, it would be spent, whereas this is an opportunity, you know, for the future, future generation to get recurring payment. So as part of that, if that was the decision we made as a city staff, is that we want the continuing money. But we also felt like for the renewal itself, there should be one-time money. And so they offered 40, and then we settled at 75.
I'm just kind of a little bit interested in the other council's feedback, if they feel like we should be negotiating a little more, or are we okay at the $75,000 and the $650 a month? It is something, I recognize why they're negotiating 10 years out, because they're locking in contracts with different carriers, since they want to make sure where they're at. I can appreciate that. I've actually had the opportunity to own a cell tower, and we were making quite a bit more than that. But you, when I talked to you, Tim, you mentioned they're not requesting any more space there. They're not adding generators, they're not, they've got the space that they've always had, they're not, they're not requesting extra space, correct?
That's right. So my understanding is we're just essentially leasing them the ground, and then it's their tower, and then they sublet to third parties. If we, if we do go back to them, I would be interested in maybe having a market analysis or something that we could find from someone in the industry who would have specialized knowledge about, and get some quotes on what they think is a good rate.
Have we checked with other cities and what they're getting?
I did talk to some other attorneys, and it's a little bit apples and oranges, based on kind of how it's configured. There's all kinds of different ways that the cell tower companies negotiate with cities, and I wasn't able to find apples to apples.
Having been on the Tempanogus Special Service District Board, we just renegotiated, and this is a good deal for the tower and not for us, if apples are even close to the same fruit. So I think we ought to take this off and have a discussion about it.
The other thing that, in addition to the income, that we read a lot about, the health hazards of these cell towers, I want to make sure the city is fully protected
So I would move that we postpone item number 2B to go back and be renegotiated, maybe getting more of a market analysis on it.
Second.
So the motion is to continue this item, to allow us to do some more homework on comparable rates. Do we want to include a closed session in there to talk about it?
Yeah, so I would also move that we go to closed session, just so we can negotiate through that.
Okay. All right, it's removed and seconded. Are we ready for a vote on this, this is item 2B? To continue it. Okay, that passes unanimously. Okay, public hearing slash action item on final plat amendment to Briarwood Ranch's plat A to incorporate the common area into each individual lot. Is that you, Tara?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Councilman. So the property is located at 6,000 West and 9,600 North. So this is the current property location on Utah County parcel maps. So for the background, Briarwood Ranches was approved in 1986 as a planned residential development, or PRD. It included eight single-family lots and 88,523 square feet of common open space, and 9960 North as a private road. In 2012, the applicants, the residents in this subdivision completed a Mylar. It was never recorded or approved by city council. They were hoping to purchase the open space in the subdivision. Open space in common open, sorry, open space in PRDs can be disposed of by Utah State Code 1098606, and it has to have approval by common ownership and the legislative body for that area. So this is the 1986 approved plat. You can see the common open space all the way around all the lots. This is, that is the area that they are proposing of disposing. For the summary of the request, they want to dispose of the common open space, again, that's roughly 88,523 square feet. They also want to dedicate the 9960 North Road to Highland City. Highland City is currently maintaining this road, and so we will continue to maintain that unless council opts not to, and make it a private road. For citizen participation, notification, yeah, notification in the Daily Herald and state website, and we also meld to all property owners within 500 feet of this subdivision. We've received 100% of the property owners within the subdivision that are of common ownership for the common open space have approved disposal of the open space. For your recommendation, the city council should hold a public hearing and recommend approval of the final plat amendment, subject to the following stipulations as recommended by staff. The final plat shall be substantially conforming with the final plat received July 16, 2019. Prior to recording, the final plat shall be revised as required by the city engineer. And that is it.
So I will open up the public hearing on this issue. If there's anyone that wishes to speak to this issue, please come forward. Looks like since everybody was in accord, there's no reason for anybody to speak. And I'm gonna close the public hearing, and then turn it over to council. Any discussion on the item?
Mayor, just for clarification, this is actually private property owned by the HOA or the private development, as opposed to city open space.
Yeah, it's private.
Right, so I'd just like to clarify that, that it's really private property that's open space in the subdivision, rather than typical open space within the city.
Yes, that's correct. And in 2012, the applicants did, if you look on Utah County, it looks like they actually ended up purchasing it, or quit claiming, or however they did it.
This is more just dotting the i's and crossing the k's then?
Yes.
Thank you.
But Utah Code does require that the legislative body approve it as well.
Okay, seeing that there isn't a lot of other comments, there are motion.
Does this require any input? Public input?
We had a, we had a public hearing and closed it.
Okay.
Mayor, I would move that the city council approved Briarwood Ranch's plat A amended, amended, subject to the two stipulations recommended by staff.
I second that.
It's removed and seconded. Ready for a vote? It's kind of like driving through a town that has three homes, Brian.
Should I, should I ask if we've had a motion and a second, too? As long as I'm not here?
Okay, that is approved unanimously. Next item, action ordinance site planning conditional use permit for flex office building. Tara?
Thank you, Mayor Councilman. The property is located at 11251 North Sunset Drive. In the map, you can see it's right in front of Highland Highway Storage and their expanded facility. For, for, in 2003, PO districts were approved. Zone was created to accommodate the storage facility and a number of professional office buildings along Highland Boulevard, and the circle red area is the proposed site. The applicant is proposing 2.13 acres. It will have 20,064 square feet for flex office space. Access will be from Sunset Drive and a shared road with the LDS Church to the north. The height of the building is a maximum of 35 feet. There are 46 parking stalls provided with two ADA stalls. This is above the development code requirement of 20. And hours of operation will be Monday through Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. There is also an existing 40-foot water line easement that runs through the property. This limits the type of improvement that can be constructed. This is the proposed landscape plan. It is meeting the 35% requirement as required by the development code. And this is the updated and most recent architectural elevations. They are using elements as required by Section 3-4922 of the development code, which includes split face rock, stone veneer, and wood, wood pitch accents. This is also requiring a conditional use permit. Conditional use permits are meant to give limited flexibility in the review, in the review of the application. If a use is allowed as a conditional use, it is assumed that the use is desirable, but may require extra level of review. Denial must be based on some factor unique to the proposed location that renders the potential negative effects of the proposed use beyond mitigation. And this is the Utah State Code as it pertains to conditional uses. For citizen participation, the applicant did host a neighborhood meeting January 8, 2019. One resident did attend that meeting. We have received multiple written correspondence in regards to that meeting that are not in favor. Notice of the planning commission meeting was published in the Daily Herald state website and mailed to the property owners within 500 feet of the proposed site. We have also received 29 emails in opposition of the project. No notice was required for city council. Planning commission did meet June 25, 2019, and they voted 5 to 1 to recommend denial. They based the recommendation of denial on seven recommendations. The site plan does not closely conform to Exhibit A. Architecture outline 1A addressed the bulk issue, overall architecture outline. So the bulkiness of the building needs to be addressed. The proposed building appears to be monotonous and repetish, repetish, and all of a
Repetitious.
Repetit, I can't say that right now. All elevation should be architecturally treated with the exemption of the back. All the buildings are required to have public restrooms, including a men's room, women's room, and a handicapped room. The zone is intended to allow for professional service, not general retail or commercial, and the roof design cannot be mansored or fake mansored roof. For your recommendation and proposed motion, city council should conduct a public meeting and approve the conditional use permit with appropriate stipulations in accordance with state law and adopt an ordinance amending the site plan. Staff has recommended four stipulations for council to consider, and it is in your packet. Any additional questions? The applicant is here as well to address questions.
So let's invite the public to speak. If you have comments related to this issue, feel free to come up, spend three minutes. Don't be repetitive. If somebody said something that you agree with, you're welcome to come up and say, I agree, and then sit down, that's perfectly fine. If you have the things to add, please add them, but you don't need to reiterate the ones you agree with from before.
So Mayor, right before we open the public hearing, I need to disclose that I have a conflict of interest with this. I'm in the middle with, working with Patterson on an easement issue on some property that I'm a partner in down in Salem, Utah. Even though we've come to terms, it hasn't recorded, so I'm gonna recuse myself and actually step off until this has been decided, so.
Thank you, Kurt.
Mayor, can I just make one comment? From, from talking with our attorneys in, in how these types of things are managed, one of the key elements for us as a city council to determine whether we approve or don't approve, or approve with requirements, is to identify where the applicant doesn't meet the code. And so if, if you are interested in helping us as a council to understand where your concerns are, please point out specifically in the code where you believe that it's in violation. Coming up and saying, we don't like the looks of it, is not something that we can address. In other words, we can't say, just because it's ugly, you know, that's, that's too vague and too much of an opinion. So our requirement is to say, you're not meeting the code in this specific place. And if you'll help us identify that by you telling us where those things are, then we can look at it and better understand what you're talking about, what your concern is, and we can make sure that, that we address those specific items.
And just to be clear, we're talking about the code, development code, not the general plan. Anything else?
Right, the professional office development code, which is Section, Chapter 3, Section That's, that's where you would find the specific stuff. And so it's not to say that what you're talking about won't fit in there. It is, help us see where in there that you're concerned about, it's not meeting that. And that way, we can make sure that we address each piece.
Okay. You're welcome to speak if you'd like.
I'm Clyde Redford. I live in Country French. That's the planning commission meeting where they denied this, and Jerry did a very good job of pointing out various aspects in which the proposed plan varied from what was originally proposed, what we thought was going to be built when we bought into the development across the street. And obviously, now he's switched because he said it's not economic to build what he originally proposed in Exhibit A. I would propose that it's not, not economic, it's more economic to produce the building that he's proposing now. Nevertheless, to your point, sir, you're asking us to come in here as attorneys. You've, you've gotten your attorneys involved here, and asked, and asked us to point out to you where it's not complying. There's enough about this project and the bait and switch that's going on here. Perhaps you could point out to us every aspect in which this building does comply with the code, and why it should be approved, as opposed to why we should just let Patterson do what he wants. That's all I have to say.
I'm James Sparks. I'm a resident of Country French. There's a couple of things that, first of all, I'm not real sure about, but there were a couple of things that were pointed out in the review of the, of the proposed motion. One of the stated, I guess you would call it, topics of the, of the motion was that it was in compliance with the will of the residents. It's already been stated that 17 people wrote in, I believe, in disagreement with the proposed I did not participate in the first city council where this was addressed, and I haven't written in, so I would consider myself an 18th person. There's a couple of things that are of great concern to me. It may not be, you may not be aware of it, but directly across the street of the entrance to this plot of land is a major bus stop. I believe that the increased traffic that these facilities would increase risk and danger. The street that this is being built on, the main thoroughfare there, is also in very poor condition. And it's going to require additional maintenance and service, and I'm kind of curious to know who's going to fit the bill for that. I feel that the increased traffic and damage to that road should not fall upon a person who lives in that neighborhood, who didn't want that facility put there to begin with. And the third thing, and my final thing, is that I wanted to bring up, was that when we built into the neighborhood, and we had a pitch to us that there was a certain format, that we needed to follow a certain regulation, a code, that when we wanted to make changes to that code, we were denied. And it seems, and perhaps you can clarify this for me, but it seems that the city was the person who got to dictate what that code was and how it was followed. Whereas the planning commission has not approved this or not recommended it, I would like to know if this motion is passed, why they would go against the planning commission's recommendation that it not be passed. I believe that's my time.
Okay, but if you have something to add that's short, feel free.
My main concern is the increased traffic. It's going to be dangerous, going to, as mentioned, increase wear and tear on the highway. My home values and all of those things aside, my main concern is the increased traffic. That road is really, really overtaxed already. And we have, because, I don't know if my other neighbors have noticed this, but we have a lot of people that come into that neighborhood to enjoy the sidewalks and the walking tracks and things like that in the neighborhood. And that increased traffic has brought, I believe, increased crime to our neighborhood. Every year, we have cars that come through and steal packages off of our front porch and follow the UPS truck around and things like that. I think this proposed motion is only going to drastically increase the attention that our neighborhood gets. That's all I have.
Dustin Schulteis, same subdivision. Wait, I had, I'm one of the citizens that had the attorney send a letter to you. I assume you guys all got the letter, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so when you're talking about code, I know you have it, but you're asking where it's written, so I'm not gonna read the whole letter, because it'll take longer, but... But just so it's on the record, again, I'm skipping way down, just reading the bullet points. Flex office space is not permitted in the use in the professional office zone according to Development Code Table 3-47A. Again, I'm just summarizing. Highland City has adopted a table use, part of the Development Code. If you skip down, flex office is specifically identified as non-permitted use in this table 3-47A. Again, hit the next, number two. Flex office space, not a conditional use in the professional office according to Development Again, I won't do it, read the whole paragraph, but you guys have acknowledged you have it. Number three, city council is obligated to harmonize any ambiguity in the Development Code in order to determine enforcement and purpose of ordinances. Again, going back to this table in the city code on uses, cites Nixon versus Salt Lake City as a case against that. And conclusion, it seems like we, again, another case study, Springville Citizens for Better Community versus City of Springville. Before city council considers any design criteria to the proposed Highland Business Park development, it must determine flex office warehouse use as either permitted use or a conditional use in the professional office zone. I think reading through this and all that's been talked about, I think at this point, at least we should have the city council take time to address these concerns and if they fit, and if so, how, before something is passed. So again, we ask you to take in, you talked, one of the neighbors talked about having to have attorney. I mean, we are at this point have to hire an attorney in order because that's what it's going to as far as down the code. And so we ask you at least take a look and address this and let us know how this fits. I know there's been questions whether or not it does, but it does not say in here that it's just for one part of the city. That's all that's there. So as a citizen, I guess that's where we're scratching our head about what's been proposed before and then all this, and still seems like it's just getting pushed through without any acknowledgement or at least taking time to figure out if it does. Thank you.
Thank you.
Samantha Kirby in Dry Creek. And I think it's hard for us to sit here and say, "We took the time, we've done the research, but we don't know the professional office code, so we're not really supposed to have an opinion if we don't know that code." That kind of puts us in a bad position. Now, if you just drive past there, that building doesn't make any logical sense in Highland for that location. Now, I can't understand why Patterson has to put his warehouse right there. Does he not own any other property? It just doesn't make sense. And it's listed as flex office. Flex office? What does that mean? The people behind will be able to see the garage doors lifting. You know, maybe you won't see it if you're standing in front of the building, but those residents in Dry Creek, they will be looking at the side and the back of that building and all the trucks going in and out of that building. And Patterson didn't change his plan from the last time that we were here at the meeting. And I think the other strong consideration is that they will be sharing the roadway with LDS Church. That doesn't always make sense because there's lots of activity and scouting and things like that going on that will conflict with that. I just think if you drove past thinking of the traffic, the visual, the way that Highland is planned out, it makes literally no sense at all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. My name is Anne Swart Hanson. I live in Bull River on Tamarack Drive. And I strongly, oh, and I want my comments to be recorded, please. Submitted.
Everything's recorded.
Well, I want it submitted in the minutes. I strongly urge you to vote against this conditional use permit for a flex building. The planning commission voted against it. That's number one. That's what you already know. The developer does not want to meet or be compliant with the conditions and the criteria set forth in the professional office zone, which I have read. And it's my understanding to that as well. The proposed conditional use for a flex building, which clearly goes against the stipulations, the intention of this zone, and clearly defines that flex buildings are not permitted, no retail or commercial use in this area of the city. And you can find examples of that in 4901, the intent and use of the zone, the city's intended UPA provisions, 4902, 4904. I'd like to address 4903, prohibited uses, 4907, building heights, because this is on a slope. If you look at the geography, are they going to stay compliant with that? Also, 4915, lighting and security. You'll need lighting in a residential area to make the area secure. Also, 4923, non-conforming structures and uses. But I want to bring up something else that someone else did bring up, but I want to add to it. In 2009, a transportation network proposal was rejected by the city. And what this referred to was that what is now Highland Boulevard is a proposed five-lane arterial road for where Highland Boulevard is now, a two-lane road. The city foresaw this as a residential and limited professional offices. This CUP in development would be a traffic hazard because it's on a dangerous bend. It narrows down into a commuter entrance, commuter lane entrance. People are going to be, for egress, will have to be stopping and going where other people want to hurry on and go to the commuter lane. And also, it's proximity to SR92. And all of the proposed flow of traffic that will be proposed with future development of residential growth. It's potentially a dangerous traffic hazard because of the egress issues. We in Bull River will be adjacent to it. And if we looked at the original proposal, they didn't have enough parking for all the construction that they wanted there. So they came in, I'd like to ask to extend.
Yeah.
Thank you. They had to come into Bull River entrance, near the entrance, to continue parking for that one building for professional use offices. So I'm very concerned also about the parking for these structures. If it is not a retail, commercial use, why do they need 16-foot loading docks, doors, and such? This is not in keeping with residential office, professional office use. To say that we don't want to discuss what it looks like, okay, I can see where we can be very subjective on this, but the professional zoning is very, very clear on what should be proposed for this development site. And this proposal does not meet any of those standards according to any of the subsections within this Development Code. And I feel very hesitant to say this, but I'm compelled to. What do we want to legislate by? Our fear of litigation? Or what the citizens who pay taxes and who have put substantial investments in their real estate, their voice? Which voice do you want to listen to? Thank you.
If you have that electronically, could you mail it to Cindy? Huh? Oh, you already have? Okay. Anyone else?
My name's Melanie Westcott, and I live in Country French. I can't remember if this is the third or fourth meeting I've been to on this. The table that Justin referenced, someone said you had it. Could we see it on the screen? And I'll keep talking while that's coming up so that everyone can see that and hopefully take pictures of it. Also, I have an abbreviated version of that here. It's called Highland City Related Land Use Table, that it's found from the city. And again, reiterating, it says under office, flex use office NP, not permitted. So that is a really strong point that seems to have been ignored that I want to reiterate. Also, in 2003, Patterson submitted plans that those of us who bought lots from them a few years later were aware of. And I know the city has had these, and it shows where they're now trying to put one long, huge building. There were four buildings that surrounded the storage unit, and I have that here, and I can hand you the copy. They even had a picture of one of their office buildings. You can see it looks like a home, and this was going to be what they looked like. And that's what we were told when we bought our lots. It's a far cry from the industrial strip mall warehouse retail space that they're wanting to build. It doesn't even compare, which, again, I know you have the picture, but the difference is very alarming. When we bought our lots, we asked about the storage unit. We thought it was very ugly, even the existing building that isn't part of the storage sheds. And they said, "Don't worry, we're going to be building office space that looks just like our existing office space on Highland Boulevard." And we were put at ease. We thought, "Oh, great, those are beautiful. They look like homes." And that's what we've expected. So you can imagine how alarming it is to now see something that looks like a warehouse that should be on the frontage road of the freeway or on Geneva Road, something that should not be at the entrance of Highland, going up Highland Boulevard, right across from Country French, property that Patterson sold to us. And then immediately, once all their lots were sold, they spring this on us, which is not honest, after what they told us and what we thought had been approved before we bought our lots. And then you go all the way up Highland Boulevard and all these beautiful homes to Highland, and the entrance is a big, huge industrial warehouse. It's just crazy to me. That looks like really a hideous strip mall in my mind. Also, my final question is, what is the purpose? And I asked this last time. What is the purpose of codes, zoning? What is the purpose of a planning commission who vetted this and did not approve it? What's their purpose? What's your purpose if it can just be approved anyway? Like, why do we have zoning? Why do we have codes? Why do we have a planning commission? So that's my final question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Andrew Howlett. I live in the Irene subdivision there, just above where the proposed property is. I just have a couple of comments, obviously. One, just want to reiterate, the code does seem to state, I mean, if we're all looking at it and it's all been looked on the city website, it says against the table that has been cited again multiple times, so I won't go into that. But I mean, I guess a couple of other just quick comments and questions. Is this the only type of property like this in Highland? Will it be if it was approved as this is? Are there any other flex office spaces in Highland?
Not at present.
Not currently.
No? Okay. So why not?
We haven't had another proposal yet.
Okay. So we've done a lot of things in Highland to try and maintain the community. We've done a lot of things to try and maintain the place that we all live, that we love. Some of those things have hurt us. We know that we've said no to the Sunday, you know, shopping. We've said no to certain things, and that's, we've had to pay for trade-offs, but that's because we want to maintain where we're at. So why now? Why do we start with this? I've worked in offices like this, what they're proposing. They were never for a professional in my, you know, in the cases for me, one was a metal company, and exactly what they're proposing. It was a metal company, and every day, I was in that roll-up door, bending metal, welding metal, banging metal, cutting metal, oftentimes with big, huge saws. And there was trucks coming all day, every day, picking up stuff, dropping off stuff. So, you know, you can't tell me that that's not what's going to happen because why else do you need a big roll-up door? The notes that they gave in the last meeting were very disingenuous. They're like, "Well, some people really like it from an architectural standpoint. It's really cool. It's hip." I'm like, "Come on." I've run professional offices, you know, multiple times in my life, and, you know, if you do those things, you do that because you want to do it for another reason, not moving into a space like that. I also worked for a construction company, exact same space. This is exactly the type of space, and we all know that. I'm telling you guys things you know. But, you know, then the other thing that I think needs to be considered is, anybody here have kids that go to gymnastics or dance or play practice or whatever? This is exactly the space that's used for that. I'm not saying there's anything wrong with that, but have you ever waited in line when it's time to pick up your kids or drop off your kids? You ever seen those lines? There's that bar, you know, that dance studio here in Highland, and drive by that all every single night, and there's cars out on the road? Imagine Highland Boulevard with that. I mean, disaster. And so, you know, again, that's the kind of use. We don't need that. What they proposed was the office buildings originally, and I think everybody was in support of that as long as, you know, it looks good, met the code. This doesn't seem to meet the code, and also, it does present a lot of big problems, including just the type of tenants there. And we don't have it right now. We don't have this in our city. Why do we open up that can of worms? So, thank you.
Thank you.
Members of the council, Mr. Mayor, my name is Jeff Shaw. I live in Country French as well. On the record, in the last planning commission meeting, there was a gentleman that came forward and talked about owning an accounting firm that said that he would put his accounting firm in a place like this. So he spoke in favor of the project as it's presently constituted. In early, I'm a CPA. In early part of my career, I worked for a CPA firm in three different buildings, and I have two other CPAs that do tax work for me. I'm retired now, but none of those buildings looked anything like this, honestly. I can't imagine I would have clients come to my office in a building that looks like this. So I just, I have to get on the record and refute that because I just don't agree with it. Secondly, I'm concerned a little bit about the precedent that may be established by taking action and approving it, contrary to what the planning commission had advised. What will that entail in the future for the city council if they go forward and go against with the planning commission and all that's been brought forth? I'm not going to go through the code because I think we've heard that ad nauseam now, but I'm worried about the presidential basis that may establish for the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Joan Irving, and I'm in Dry Creek subdivision. I think I'm going to, I agree with everything that's been said, especially this chart that has been just shown. But when I looked at this and noted the zoning for professional offices, there's a clear NP, which is by flex use office, and that means you can't do it. And so I think that's really the key point, that this building does not fit what the area is designed for. You've got an office, and you've got loading docks and big, old, high warehouses. That's not permitted in the code, and that's just the, you know, the basic thing here, no matter what it looks like. No one also has mentioned this idea of the prohibition of storage sheds of up to nine acres. So this would add additional storage, and yet, the nine-acre limit has already been filled by the Highland Hideaway Storage. So this is additional storage on that land that, you know, it exceeds what has been in the code. Also, it just seems like, you know, the permitted uses of professional offices, like for engineers, financial services, legal offices, collection agencies, why do these people need big, old warehouses? Just as Jeff was saying, I mean, he's an accountant. You need more office space. And I don't think Mr. Patterson's really told us, I mean, who is going into these buildings? Does he have any takers on this? I mean, we haven't heard a thing about that. And... And, you know, we were expecting things like medical offices and lawyers' offices, not big old trucks coming in there and just really not consistent with the code. So that, I think, I've repeated some of what others have said. I think you got the point.
Forty-one seconds.
Thank you.
All right.
Hi, my name is Brooke Sweeney and I live in Country French. I've received a lot of the emails that have gone around, and so I'm somewhat familiar with what's been happening. I came here to the last meeting. There's quite a few residents there that were in opposition of what was being proposed at the planning meeting that we had not too long ago. And I, there was just one resident that was in favor of what was being proposed. And I would not be surprised if he was related somehow to Patterson's or worked for them because there was no one else there that opposed what was wanting to be built. So one of the issues that they mentioned at the planning committee was that they had changed their original design to the current design that they, that you've been shown, that's the warehouse, the long strip mall. And they said that they did that because there was a water table issue and they couldn't build what they originally were wanting to build. I don't understand construction all that much, but that was one of the reasons as to why they changed the design. I just don't think that because they own a piece of property that has water table issues that the city should allow and approve changing codes and zoning to allow them to build what they think is the only thing that's possible on this land. The water issue is not our problem. It's their land. And they, that's something that they need to deal with. I don't think that, I think if you change the codes and zoning to allow them to make the changes that they need to, to build on this land, you're setting a precedent for future construction companies to make the same claim. And what are you going to do then? I agree with everything that's been said before. And I want to, I just want to point out the gentleman that spoke earlier about the bus across the street. I just want you to know, but that's a school bus. That's elementary, middle school, high school. That's the only place that the kids from Bull River and the south side of our neighborhood have access to a school bus. So you're putting this strip mall right across from where all these kids get on and off every day from school. So I think that's also a problem or something to think about. I don't think I have anything else to say, so.
Thank you.
Okay.
So while we're waiting for somebody else to come up, I would like to point out that it is tempting, if you're sitting there, to feel when we go to council that you can just come up and engage with the council. Our meetings would be super long if that was the case, and we allowed that on a regular basis. So please take advantage of the time now, because when we go to council, then it's the council talking and you get to hear it. But it's going to seem rude of me to say no. If you suddenly think of something, I will probably say no because the public discussion is over. So, and I've been in your seat before and wanted to speak, and it's partly why I ran for city council when I ran before. So maybe that would motivate some of you to do that. That would be a good thing.
Thank you for that opportunity. I would like to go through the chair to Nathan Crane, what his opinion or recommendation is to this proposal.
So we will hear that. And we've heard it already with the motion, the staff recommendation. And we'll talk about that.
Okay. Let's try to think if there's another. Back to the transportation issue. I don't know if you realize the geography of this property, but Micron is on their far western. The church is on their northern border. And the property has a storage unit property on the southern border. So the only egress is from our, to, from east and west onto Highland Drive, which would cause quite a traffic flow problem.
Thank you.
Samantha Kirby. When we have been in other states, the property developers have to put something towards schools and roads. And I'm not sure that any of our developers have been required to put money towards schools. They'll build houses, but that's one thing, I don't know if Patterson is putting any money towards the schools.
He is paying impact fees, which covers, like any other developer, the impact fees on what he does.
Not mayor, not for schools. Schools are a separate entity in Utah.
That's exactly, so schools, but that's a state issue and we have no control over that. Schools are separate from the city and it's just not in our purview.
Thank you for describing. Melanie West Scott again. I just want to reiterate from the Highland Cities Related Land Use Table on page two, where it says retail all across, it says not permitted, right where it says PO, not permitted. And then in office, it says the type of office space that is permitted, of course, again, flex-use office is not permitted. And then what is permitted is office space for an architect, interior design, accountant, stock brokerage, chiropractor, physical therapist, dentistry, optometry, audiology, financial bank, credit union, insurance, not a claim adjuster, lawyer, law, licensed engineer, surveyor, medical hospital is conditional, sorry. So some of these things I'm reading are conditional. The chiropractor and physical therapist is even conditional. But the others that are permitted are professional consultant, realtor, title mortgage, conditional storage units facilities, which is there, veteran, veterinarian, sorry, office with retail clients. And then, and that's all it says, absolutely no retail permitted. And when they initially showed us the plans at the planning commission, their building designer showed us office. He said, we'll have a little retail, a flower shop. He promoted retail as something that he thought we might be excited about, which is crazy. And also, from what I understand, and I don't have it here in front of me, but there's only a certain amount of acreage that is allowed for the storage space, and that's already been used and taken up by Patterson. So that conditional piece needs to be slashed from that list. Also, I'm disappointed that at the beginning of the last planning meeting, Nathan Crane, when he spoke, he spoke as if he was the lawyer for Patterson and gave case studies of cities that were the cities lost and not once did he mention one case, as Dustin Schulsteis did, where the city won. And that seems incredibly biased to me and very discouraging as a citizen.
Okay, we're going to, this will be the last double taker. Okay.
Clyde Redford again. I really have to second what Melanie just said about Mr. Crane.
We are stopped right there. I will not permit personal attacks on anybody.
I'm not. I'm just saying that it was very, it seemed.
Actually, you're expressing an opinion about somebody's motive and that's.
Well, you were there at the meeting.
I was actually at the meeting.
Were you?
I was. I will rule that out of order, okay?
Okay, I'm out of order there.
All right. You can say anything else, but.
Well, you threw me off. But I got some time, so. The, going back to, it's not, we're not objecting to Mr. Patterson building buildings there. It's the specific building in use that we're objecting to. What he originally proposed fit in with what Melanie just read off as professional use buildings. And that, and the building that's proposed, being proposed, doesn't comply with code as Jerry Abbott very competently pointed out at the meeting that you were at. So if something is going to be approved there, it's got to be something different than what is on the table today. I don't think there's any resident here that would approve or would disapprove Patterson's ability to build something, but we want it to be more in compliance with what he proposed originally, what we thought we were buying into, instead of what is now on the table. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so council, this back to you. This is, again, this wasn't a formal public hearing, but we're informally closing public input on this right now. Let me do something. I did a little bit of homework today, and I don't know if the council has gone through this, but I did look at that table that they've been referring to. And I think Tim will talk about it later. But I did find, one, it's not referenced anywhere else in any other code section, whether it's R-120, R-130. It's only referenced in the town center section. Anyway, it's not referenced in any other section of code and no section of other code references it. But then when I went through the code or the table, it says accessory dwelling units are permitted in R-120, R-130, R-140, which clearly is not. We don't allow accessory dwelling units. So, and then also in the permitted section of the professional office, it lists, right, thirteen permitted uses, including office with retail clients. But our professional office code explicitly states that all uses are conditional. So there's a problem with the, even if it was used elsewhere, it would put in conflict a lot of different issues. And these are the ones I found. There may be other ones. So I would just point out, I've observed that it's a flawed table and it's not referenced anywhere else other than in town center. So that's, that was my homework. I thought I'd share it before we start discussion. Tim, did you want to weigh in?
Sure. And so, Mayor, you know, the problem with lawyers is they can never agree on anything. You put nine of the brightest legal minds on the U.S. Supreme Court and they're always disagreeing five to four on these really critical issues. And on both sides, they feel like they're justified. And so what's unusual about this case is I spoke several times last week with attorney Brent Clayton, who represents several of the residents. And what's unusual is that he and I agree on something. We both agree that there's ambiguity here. And the problem with ambiguity is it cuts against the city. Unfortunately, ambiguity in the code means it weighs in favor of the applicant. So the reason this is ambiguous is because we have a table which has never been applied or used in any part of the city except the town overlay. Meanwhile, those, the checks on the table are inconsistent with several places in our code like you've outlined. So we have text in the code that's inconsistent with the check boxes. But the code specifically says for professional office, the standard is compatibility. So if you simply look at the text language and even, and because there's conflict, there's inconsistency between the table and our text. So I think that that ambiguity, in my opinion, you fall back on what is the standard? Is this compatible with the intent of the zone? And so the language itself has something that I think the staff will be looking at cleaning up. But currently, it says any other conditional uses or other types of professional services which the planning commission and city council determine to be compatible with the intent of the zone. So, you know, based on the ambiguity, in my opinion, I believe there is compatibility. That's my opinion.
Tara or Nathan, anything before council? Start.
No, we're happy to address any questions. Just to add that, the, if this table of uses was to be applicable to all zones, you would see it referenced in other zones in the city. The only zone that it's referenced is the town center zone. So for example, in R-140, it would say for table, for uses allowed in R-140, see table through 37 for A. It does not say that. Any amendments we've done, any interpretations we've done, does not reference that table. It always reference the individual sections of the zone.
Okay, council?
One of, one of the residents made the statement that you're not attorneys. I'm not an attorney either. I may look like it because I have a white shirt and a tie on, but that would be foolish to think that I'm anywhere close to an attorney. And the reason why I was asking for the information is because it helps us. If you don't reference anything, then we have to go find it. And the way the law works is the code is really kind of like the game rules. And we all play, we're all playing this game. And a developer comes in and they want to know what the rules are. And the city wants to make sure that the rules are the same way. And that's why we have the code is so that everybody comes in and they feel like that they're not, the rules of the games don't continue to change. And so if we don't have clear rules, it causes problems. It causes, you know, if you've ever played a game and the rules aren't really clear, you're going back trying to read them and trying to figure it out. And if you've never played it or whatever, it just becomes hard. And so the reference is really for helping us, non-legal people, to be able to look at it and understand where you're talking. We've gone through it. At least I have, and I think the others have gone through it as well, in trying to make sure that we understand. And we've seen your letters. I've read the letters. I've read the attorney letters. So I've gone back and looked at it. I've talked to staff. I've talked to legal about some of the pieces that I had questions in. So it's really for us to make a better decision because a bunch of non-legal, normal people sitting up here on the stand have to make that decision. And we're just trying to get the best information we can. So one of the, one of the questions, as I went through this and it was brought up by at least two of you. Tim, this really comes back to the beginning of 3-4904, number one. It talks about a master planned. This whole area has to be master planned. And it shows a specific example of that. And the question that I would ask is, how much flexibility do we provide the applicant in coming in when it's master planned? It's showing the specific buildings. It's showing size of buildings. It's showing the number of parking stalls. And what is happening with this particular application is, is taking a section of it and instead of having two buildings, it has one big building and has reformatted that whole area. So can you talk to the point of the flexibility? And I guess I shouldn't just point it to you, Tim, Nathan, your staff. Please feel free to communicate how much flexibility, because this is not what was presented and it was handed to us. A nice picture was shown. You know, the designs have been laid out there for years. And it specifically says this has to be master planned from the very beginning, which means quite a bit of detail.
Well, I can speak about the standard of when the city applies its code, it can't do so arbitrarily or capriciously. And so the applicant would need to meet the minimum standards of our code. And so if there's any kind of discernment used or interpretation of whether it does for technical design standards, it would have to be something that would be comparable to what our minimum standards are. As far as how this project meets those technical design standards, I'll defer to Tara. Sorry for throwing.
Tara, I'll jump in. So the council has ability to modify through the site plan review process, modify the master plan. If you remember, we did that when the council approved the expansion of the storage unit. We did that. So they have the ultimate flexibility. When you look at a project over time, everything changes. So ten, twenty, ten, fifteen plus years ago, things change. And we recognize that. And as a council, I think the council recognizes that. And that's why you build in flexibility to change with the minimum standards that you have.
So I guess the question really is, are we obligated to? In other words, it's master planned. It's laid out a certain way. And we can change if we want. We can look at it and go, yeah, that's silly. We no longer use Adobe Brick anymore, so we'll upgrade the standards to cement block or cement or something like that. But we can also hold them to what was originally designed. I would believe that we should be able to from a master plan standpoint. And so I'm, that's why I'm asking the question.
So absolutely, we can hold them to the design standards of our code. So absolutely, we can hold them to the design standards of our code. As a practical matter, every time there's an applicant, there's always a back and forth. There's always red lines. There's always a little give and take in every project. So there's all, it's, there's, it's, it's not quite so black and white. So there is a little flex, flexibility there, but not so much that we're acting arbitrarily or capriciously.
So I, I think the question is, they had listed it as professional office. They're now changing it to flex office. Is, is there something that requires us to stay with the original plan? Or because it is a conditional use process that we're going through, are we obligated to approve it if it meets, if it fits the conditional uses?
I see. So if your, if your question is, can the council take action on what's before you in its current iteration? Is that legal? I think the answer is, would be clearly yes.
So, so that's not my question. My question is, there's two buildings showing in the master plan. Can we hold them to two buildings into the drawings that they originally showed? Because it was master planned. And if not, what, what, why can't we hold them closer to what that master plan is than the significant change in the plan that is, is showing before us today?
And you're referring to the 2003?
When it was originally...
So, so since that time, we've already amended that plan?
I understand. We can amend certain portions of it. But that, because you amend one area, it doesn't require you to follow that path everywhere. Because if you only amended part A, that doesn't automatically change B, C, and D and E. So they've got them listed as separate buildings. They showed specific pictures of them. And it's, it's that design because it was master planned. I mean, that's, that's the definition of this whole zone, was that we're doing this for a specific reason. We want it to look a certain way. Therefore, we are master planning it so that that consistent look and feel continues even in ten years after, or fifteen, which, that's today. And that was the intent of doing it the way it was done, is we want it as close to what this is then as we will in the future.
If you're asking me to interpret the development agreement, which was adopted back in 2003, I don't have it in front of me. So I'm not going to quote it. I won't be able to give you an opinion on that issue. Although I think Nathan may have something he wants to say.
Based on the code being an administrative action, no, I don't believe that you can deny an amendment to the master plan if it meets your code. That's my opinion.
So it, so the reason why I asked the question is, it is the master plan. So why would the applicant have the ability to change at their discretion without our permission? Because that's the point of the master plan.
Right. But we built in the process to change it in the code, which is the site plan amendment process.
Which allows us, as a council, to approve. But they can only apply for it. They don't get to...
Again, yes. But it's administrative action and not a legislative action, which determines the amount of discretion that you have.
So again, it comes back to, because it's administrative, we can look at it and say, "No, we don't, we don't agree that, that one building should be built there because the master plan shows two. Why, why can't we just state that?"
You can, if you would like. You're the council. But it's, my, my opinion is, it's administrative action. If your code says, it can't, if your code does not say it has to be two buildings, then how do you deny that?
And where I'm coming from is, the code specifically says it is master planned. So it does say, "Here is what it looks like." And that's why I believe...
Understood. I'm just, I'm giving you my opinion.
Right.
Right?
And that's what I'm asking for.
Yes.
Because, because you've allowed it to go this far. Obviously, I'm trying to understand that, the difference between that opinion.
So I think, I think it would be an error to assume that an applicant doesn't have, does not have the right to amend a master plan.
Well, they're, they have the right to propose it.
Correct.
But as a city, we have the right to hold them to what the master plan originally said.
Or what standard.
Or under our decision, we could change it if we felt like it was in the best interest of the city.
Yes. But you have to have certain parameters under what you can change. For example, when we did the master plan for another piece of property, we had very specific parameters in which they could change it under. So if you were going to base a decision on whether you were going to approve and/or deny a master plan, you would have to say, or amend a master plan, or deny a master plan amendment to, you would have to say, "Why?" Not just because I don't like it. You would have to say, "Why?" For example, if they were going to put a hospital here, you would say, "I am not going to approve this amendment because you are four times the capacity of our roads." Something like that. You need, you need something concrete to do it. You can't just say, "Hey, I prefer this." Does that make sense?
Yeah. And I guess what I'm saying is, your master plan doesn't show one giant building on this. It shows two. So meet that code. Meet, meet that. I mean, that's specific in the code. We were talking just a minute ago about there being, there being a matrix. And we don't use that because it's not specific in there. And this is very specific. So that's why I was asking.
Tim Merrill, just a quick question. Try not to put you on the spot too much. But could you weigh on your opinion as well in conjunction with what Nathan is saying? Did that make sense?
I agree that this is an administrative action.
Okay.
So the spirit of what, of what Nathan is saying, I would concur with.
Thank you.
I'd like to make some comments, if I could. I guess I'm, that's why I'm here. And I really appreciate the discussion, and I appreciate the feedback from the city. And I want to say two or three things. I appreciate the Patterson Construction Company for all the good housing that they build in North Utah County. I appreciate the way they develop French Country States. There's some mighty fine people that live there. I, I think your office buildings, those three office buildings are beautiful and present a nice entrance to the city. However, as a councilman, I was elected to represent the people. And I think the citizens in this area have brought up some very valid concerns. As a councilman, or person, I guess to be politically correct, I really have a hard time voting against what the Planning Commission recommended. I support their stipulations and their concerns. As I look through this Article 4.9 that was actually quoted by the Berg Engineering Company that presented this presentation to the Planning Commission and the council back in January, all those examples they give, and I could read through them, with the exception of construction companies, I couldn't see any of those that need a warehouse. And I don't think that citizens of Highland want warehouses in Highland. I don't hear anyone in this audience saying they're opposed to professional office buildings. Exhibit A, which is referred to from 2003, shows some beautiful, home-like office buildings. And I think everyone in here is saying they would support that because it's, it's compatible with their neighborhood. You know, when you put out, you know, hundreds of thousands or millions of dollars for a nice home, you don't want a warehouse across the street. So we can dance on the head of a pin here and try to say, "Our code's ambiguous," which it is. But I haven't been convinced, looking through this code, that this is really permitted, even though we've had lots of opinions on it. So I, I'm really kind of having a hard time. And, and the Pattersons are great people. I have nothing against them. But they recently proposed putting some professional office buildings on S R 92 in the property they own. So if they want to build professional office buildings there, I'm kind of confused why it's not okay to put them over where they were in the master plan before. So my feeling is, is I'm going to represent the citizens on this. And I'm voting no. And, and I'm going to support the Planning Commission. That's why we have a Planning Commission. We need to clean up our development code. There's too much ambiguity in it. And I'm willing to help with that. But I can support this project.
So before we go any further, the developer, if he's here, would he like to say something? Sure.
There's a lot of misinformation. And some of the basic facts are still there. Let me first say that the people that have said that they were assured that they would not build anything over there except this office, or that, or something. Most of these residents that live in Country France, probably more than half, are not the original buyers. And I checked with Dave Cottle. There's a portion of them that are not original buyers. Thank you. Because I've talked to some of them. And the ones I've talked to have said, "Well, we were not here for that." But I, that's not a fact that I, I just assumed it because of the ones I've talked to, that when I've asked them, they've said, you know, "We bought this second hand. We bought it from so-and-so." But the next item is that the, Dave Cottle, the sales agent that sold most of those lots, and this is true. I asked him, "Dave, did you promise anybody, are there any conversations that you told them what would happen on the adjacent property?" He said, "Absolutely not." He said, "In their closing statement, there is a document that clearly states that we do not represent anything except for what happens on this land." So those that are here with their, as original buyers, that they go back through their documentation, they will find that document. I don't know what he said, but...
One at a time. He didn't interrupt any of you, so...
There, and then the original issue that continued to delay this was always about design. Make it look more residential. I met with some of the residents of Country France. And there was one resident that says, "I much prefer the newer, modern-type building rather than the one that you've..." Because this took months and months and a lot of money. Not that that's a factor. That's part of the process. But we were willing to spend another $400,000 to make it, to be, fit the guidelines as they went through everything. And just to find out during the planning committee that it was as ugly as it could be, regardless of how it was. And so the traffic's always going to be an issue. As was stated, there's, on the horizon, maybe a five-lane highway on that road, eventually coming down. And, and traffic is, the upside of that is, I've had one of the people that have been fighting this. He says, "If you get it approved, I'd like to buy or rent one of those." And I've had one other person right in the neighborhood likewise, that said, "We'd like to take three. Make sure you put our name on it." The upside is, the traffic goes both ways. These people won't be driving out through Thanksgiving Point every day, wasting a half hour trying to get through those lights because, and a lot of other residents, because they'll have services in their backyard. And I shouldn't say the backyard, because it means Country France backyard. And that's not what I'm trying to say. I'm saying that the residents of Highland will make this as successful because it's well-needed. And there'll be a benefit to those citizens that live here and the citizens that live here and buy and occupy those offices, as well as those that utilize them. The parking, it was a little nebulous. But it was stated early, and it is true. We have ample, more than enough parking. There's not a, we didn't come close. We just have, I don't know how many extra stalls to where the parking should not be. Because we know also that people that put just as per code sometimes hurt themselves and shoot themselves in the foot if they don't have ample parking for what's needed. So we do have that. And as far as sharing the road with the LDS Church, I don't know where that's coming from. But, and the building, there is no wetlands there. Absolutely no truth to anything about high-water tables or anything else. Again, some of these things come up, and I don't know where they evolved from. But there's no truth to that.
Counsel, do you have any questions for Mr. Patterson?
Help me understand your, your thought behind, why change what you know that the city would like to have, the residents would like to have, based upon what you've already built there? Why not build something similar to that? What, what is the push for not developing that? Because that's the type of thing that, that no one here would push back at all on.
Yes. And, and again, I need to be respectful for those people that are our neighbors. And, and at the same time, when you say, "Nobody wants it," there's going to be a lot of use. There's a lot of citizens in Highland that will use them.
Didn't say nobody wanted it.
You're saying the back, my back...
And I'm saying, people want what you've already developed. And so why not put that product in this spot, which is what it was originally designed for? That was my statement earlier, is the master plan shows a continuation of what you had already done on your three buildings on Highland Boulevard. Why are you wanting to not continue?
We think this still meets the same intent. And I guess there's a little difference of opinion there because a lot of times, and we had this conversation at the planning committee, we will go in on a subdivision, show five or six homes, the designs, colors, and so forth. But by the time you get through a subdivision, sometimes it's two or three years, and it takes on a whole different flavor. They're not the same plans that we originally proposed. Nobody ever questions it. It was just, you have to have something as a possibility, what could go there. And that was the intent.
You made the comment that you were willing to put another $400,000 in to make the building more appropriate. What, what kinds of things would you even be considering? You know?
My son and Eric Larson that was here at planning committee, they would answer that more. But it has a roof on it that, again, somebody talked about the height limit. We are not in excess of that. But by having to put a pitch roof up and over, we're talking $100,000 on the roof because they did not like the flat roof that we had. On the windows, we had residential, the shutters, the beams that we were putting out, the posts for all the doorways and the entries. The, more of the rock rather than just the cinder block. The stucco, and then mixing them all up and giving it more, more dimension. Those are all part of it.
Did you ever consider putting two buildings there and splitting it instead of having the one?
Well, the difficulty with that, and I've explained it to some of the residents, is we have the Lehigh power water lines. And there's a huge easement goes through there that kind of chops it all up to where we can't really move. We really can't move and push it over to the one side or the other because of those easements. Those easements are for open space and for driveways and that type of stuff. Buildings there, sorry.
When you, when the master plan was designed, it was showing one building on Highland Boulevard in that area, a second building back on the road easement into your storage. Why not continue with that plan?
I think I've answered that the best that I can. Things have changed. Needs have changed. And I think the demand. And I think there's a lot of other offices. It'll continue. As you probably know, Lehigh City has, and the people from, I'll call them Micron, but it's not Micron, made that road. And all, that whole area is going to be office, warehouse, and whatever else is allowed. And it will come because of the needs there. And so we've not had a great success in getting people to want to office on an off-road. And that's how come it's been 16 years and only three buildings built. and that's how come it's been 16 years and only three buildings built. If there was a need, they'd be built.
Thank you.
Anything else, Wayne?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I have the development agreement now so I can speak responsibly to counsel member Breathwaite's question. So, in the development agreement, the standard is substantially. So it doesn't have to be exactly, but it needs to be substantially in compliance with Exhibit C. It says that the preliminary and final professional office project approval, site plan approvals, plat approvals, to develop and construct the professional office project shall substant, shall be substantially in compliance with the concept plan. Exhibit C in the city expressly acknowledges and agrees that the newer amended ordinances allowing professional office space and storage units, acreage, square footage, number of buildings, storage units, will include those terms necessary to allow development substantially set forth herein. So that's, that's the contractual standard.
So then it becomes our decision on what substantial is and what isn't, and then it becomes a judge's decision if people don't like it or do like it. So one of the, just, you know, again, for the, for those residents who are here, one of the key elements is, if, if we're not very specific in this, it makes it real easy for anybody contesting this to go out and push against us. If we don't have anything specific, then there's, there's no case. I mean, it's real easy to, to win a case if we don't describe what the issues are. If we describe what the issues are and where the, where the problem is, then we can either say it's black and white, you don't comply, or we say, you're not complying with this, here's what you have to do to come in compliance. And then they can choose to come in compliance or not. It's, it's up to them. And so for us to just say, no, we don't do it, there is, there's, in my unlegal opinion, zero chance of us being able to keep that building from happening. If we can specifically identify the areas, then that becomes the discussion point. And thus, the reason why I was asking specifically for areas and why I've looked at, at the areas that we can point out. And so as a council, we, we need to and have to identify every, everything that we want them to do to come in compliance or be very specific on why we're rejecting it and where, where we have the ability to reject it inside the code so that it's, it's clear. And the judge will look at it and say, well, you're wrong and, or you're right, and it becomes fairly easy. Well, somewhat easy, I guess, when you have code that isn't, isn't that black and white.
So, Mr. Mayor, if you're ready for a motion, I think I'll put a motion on the table for further discussion if necessary. You're moving to continue?
No, I'm moving that we approve the conditional use permit with the appropriate force stipulations in accordance with state law and adopt the ordinance amending the site plan.
Okay. If there's a second, we can continue to discuss the motion. Or if there's not a second, then, there won't be one. Is there a second? Is there a second? No. No second. So Ed?
The motion is.
I was going to make a motion that we continue this issue or this question until we've done sufficient research to determine whether or not there are substantial variations that would require some change. I think it's difficult for the council in this kind of a setting to come back with something that would be defensible. So I would propose that we continue this item until we've had a chance to make that review and determine if there are items that can be substantially modified and still comply with our code.
So the motion is to continue and, and get additional legal counsel on view and then bring it up again after that.
I'll second that.
That was moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
So the question I would have is, I mean, from a fairness to the residents and the applicant themselves, the key issue is, how do we, how do we compile the information and who's going to be responsible for that? As a council, are we looking to bring it back to us? Are we looking to push this to staff? I think staff has gone through and talked about it, so we've got to give them some direction on this. Or are we, as a council, need to identify the pieces and give it to staff? I, I think it's a little too broad to be able to hand that off because I'm not sure.
Are there, so you had a specific question whether.
Yeah, I have a.
Because of the master plan.
I have multiple pieces that I believe ought to be in there, and we can either bring them up here or I can submit them to staff, and we can move forward, you know, with that discussion. But to me, it's key, and this is what I was stating earlier, it's key that we identify if we're going to approve it with conditions, then we have to be clear what those conditions are and feel comfortable with it. I don't, I'm not prepared to describe those in enough detail that it would work. So I would like some help with those, or we could deny it, and I don't know that I have the right stuff in front of me to be able to say, here, here are the clear reasons for the denial. I mean, I, I feel like I need some help in that, but I also don't feel like throwing on staff because they're going to help us do it, but they need some direction on what it is that, that we want, where we want to take this.
So, would we want to include in the motion, direction to council to provide staff no later than Monday with specific questions that you have, that you would like them to address?
Or areas that you believe are part of this direction or that direction?
Right. So.
Fair enough.
So, does someone want to amend their motion?
Yeah, I'll amend the motion as stated.
Okay.
And I'll second that, as stated.
Thank you, because I, you know, staff has done what they've done. If they had some of these thoughts of going down these paths, then they would have already, and they have already addressed, you can see it in the report, of what they listed were the specific issues that they're addressing and why they're addressing them. So they've tried to be as clear as possible in, in the stuff, in those pieces.
Okay. It's moved, seconded, we're ready, ready to vote, Aaron. Okay, that passes three to one. All right, next item. Kurt, you're welcome back on the stand. And the next item is item five, public hearing slash ordinance amending section three dash six twenty-three of the development code relating to temporary use permits for produce stands.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Councilman. So for the background, Sugar Sweet Produce is the applicant.
All right, can you pause for a second? Thank you, audience, for being so respectful and, and courteous in your comments. I really, really appreciate that. Go ahead, sorry.
Okay. So Sugar Sweet Produce operates from June to September. Their previous location was fifty-four fifty-two West, eleven, eleven thousand North, so Tempanogus Highway. They had a move due to the development of quick pack car, car wash. In 2017, they moved to six thousand West, Tempanogus Highway. This is a residential zone and for temporary uses, they are not permitted in residential zones other than for institutional uses. Temporary uses are only permitted in the commercial zone, so C one, C R, or town center overlay zone. The applicant is proposing, they, we adjust the wording to allow and produce stands when adjacent to an arterial street. We did meet with planning commission on July, sorry, I had the date, July of 2019, and they did recommend approval six to zero, to recommend approval on this wording. After that meeting, staff has proposed some modifications, some minor modifications to the wording, to narrow down on possible locations. And the change wording is and produce stands when located on intersecting arterial streets and the intersecting, intersection of arterial streets and minor or major collector streets. This does allow for seven possible locations in Highland City that meet these, this change in wording. And these are the locations. And the proposed wording is, would only allow for produce stands and institutional uses in residential zoning, if they meet these requirements. The applicant is here as well to address any additional questions that you may have.
Okay, so this is a public hearing, that's, in the public hearing. I get to use my gavel, and we do have one person that signed up, and then anybody else can follow. So, welcome.
Hi, my name is Doug Courtney, I'm a resident of Highland. And I have no problem with altering the development code to allow the produce stand in these spots. I do have a concern about limiting it to produce stands. That, I, I do have a concern about limiting it simply to produce stands. There are a number of different temporary uses that are listed in the development code. And to me, there's no difference in the land use between the snow cone shack or a Christmas tree lot or a produce stand. And so that leads me to two conclusions. Either we're carving out an exemption for this one, effectively this one particular person, that we run the risk that we're doing some spot zoning. Or two, that really, we set a precedent by doing this, that we're then forcing ourselves down the road to allow it for other temporary uses. And if that's the case, let's just admit that upfront and put it in the development code. Thanks.
Thank you, Doug.
I'm Helene Pocroft, and I live down in Meadow, Meadowlark. My concern, I, I, I love the produce stands, but where they are is a problem. I have seen the problem. I think, for instance, I see traffic going west and people leaving the store and heading home, suddenly thinking, I'll stop at the corn stand and cutting across the traffic that you see at five thirty at night. And I think that the, the street ninety-two hundred should have red zones in front of those stands. They should go to the next intersection and turn up into the side streets and get off the main highway. I think it's a real traffic problem during certain period times of the day. And I love the fresh produce. I think it could be within the, the grocery store area where they have some of the bins for Goodwill or, or different things like that, or the fire, they have room for fireworks, they, they certainly could have room for produce because we all like to do that. But I just see it as a problem. I really would like to see some red paint in front of that on ninety-two hundred. And I think, because I do think it's a problem. Thank you.
I think, Helene, Helene, I think you were referring to SR ninety-two and not ninety-two-hundred. Okay. You said ninety-two-hundred, but it's.
Thank you.
That would be even better, that's an American Fork.
It's an American Fork, yeah. We can paint all of American Fork red, they'd love it.
Any other comments? I'm going to close the public hearing. And would the owner or produce stand person come up and?
Do you have specific questions for me, or?
Did you have any comments first, and then I'll, I'll turn it over to questions.
Yeah, just, I've sent you all an email that kind of details my position, so I'll just be really brief. Been here for, really ever since you allowed that. As a gentleman, I'm not against other people, that's great, I'm, I'm all for it, that doesn't matter to me, that's really more up to you, so that, I have no specific problem with that. As far as the traffic and the safety and everything, we have been in this specific location for almost three years and we've never had any, you know, major racks or issues there. And so, just because we didn't know until, until recently that this wasn't in the right zone, so we've been operating as is for almost three years and had no issues as far as like major racks and that kind of thing. So I think we're, I would just say that history is, I guess, on our side there. And I would just say that, yeah, we just want to get some corn and watermelon to the people of Highland, and you hope you'll allow us to do that. If you have any other specific questions, I, above what was in my email, I'd be happy to answer those.
Any questions?
Yeah, when you're going to get some Brigham City peaches up here?
Soon. Give me, give me about, it's, everything's late this year, so give me about two weeks and we'll have them for you.
Could you maybe help me understand a little bit about your parking? I know that you're, you're where you're at right now at SR ninety-two and six thousand, there's a ditch that kind of divides that lot. When that lot gets full on the bottom area where you have your stand, have you seen cars park across the street with people crossing the street? You know, have you seen people parking back on the other side? You know, because I, when I went past the other day, I noticed that it kind of was a little full, and I wasn't sure where the next car might park or be able to get in and out. What have you experienced there?
Sure. So most of the time, just during, you know, Monday through Friday, we're not super busy and it's almost everyone parks just kind of right, just next to the stand. Like if you're looking at the roads on the left-hand side, just right as they pull in, there's enough room for probably three, maybe four cars comfortably. So ninety, I would say, percent of the time, people park there. When we get in our busier times, which is in the afternoon, and then Saturdays are a little busier, most people park that side and then they fill in to the other side. Because I have my employees park, like, sorry, I'm using my hands, but I need to use my words. They park their cars significantly farther away on that opposite side. So when this, the left side gets full, they usually just fill in onto the right, right there. And occasionally we'll have people stop along Tempanogus Highway and then, but I would say that's rare, but it does happen. And then, no one usually parks across on the other side of the ditch, I've never seen that. And I've never seen anyone park on the opposite side of Tempanogus Highway and cross. So, but I've never seen, hope someone park on the other side of the ditch or on the other side of Tempanogus Highway. And I would say ninety-eight percent, I mean, I haven't run a study, just park on one side of the stand or the other.
And then the next question is about your sales tax. I assume you're charging sales tax. Where would that be reported? Is each of your stands, do you go get a specific sales tax permit for each stand, or is it just general and you report to where you have one location?
We just report, as far as the, with its rest produce, in a lot of places we have an exemption, and then we, for some cities requires to do a, a special ID number. And so we pay it one generally, it depends on the city, is the answer to the question. The cities that require a special event number, we get that, and then the cities that don't, we pay it into the general fund. That's how that works.
So I have a question. Who owns that property?
Good question. So it used to be owned by Jordan Valley Water, they sold it to Lehigh City, and now it's owned by whoever is Micron. And that just all happened in about May is when that, that happened.
Scott, I Am Flash is listed as the current owner.
Sorry, I Am Flash, not Micron, thank you.
What would I Am Flash want with that?
It's a well.
Oh, it's a well, okay.
It's the water rights that are there, that's why they want it.
That's my understanding as well.
So some of the alternate places that were on the map that they showed previously are, seem to be on city property. Is that right, Nathan? The ones down there by the Canal Boulevard, that, that has to be pretty much on city property, wouldn't it? There's private property on the other side, of course.
So what this map represents is where people could apply. It doesn't necessarily represent where an owner would allow it.
Okay. But if it's on city property, would the city allow that?
Well, that would be up to the council.
Okay.
To decide. So remember, this is a request to allow produce stands, it's not necessarily just at this location, but at those locations where it could be. It's not necessarily just at this location, but at those locations where it could be.
Any other questions for?
What were some of the other items that Doug raised?
Does staff have any concern with having, you know, Christmas trees, I mean, other years? So one of the, one of the key elements Helena brought up is the traffic and things like that. And part of the issue here is the city staff will go out and make sure that it's safe and we have the the fire chief and all those other things happen. So we know that certain businesses may not end up in some of these places just because of the type of business. But if we were to open this up to other ones, does staff see any concern with any of those types of things? I mean, obviously, if there was site location specific, if they had a bunch of dry, dry weeds and they were gonna put a fireworks stand there, we may not, you know, approve something like that. But I'm just thinking, maybe on the hill where this is at, in the wintertime, you wouldn't want to have a tree stand there because you'd slide down the tree or the the hill and hit the cars in front of you trying to stop, so.
I'll I'll address the traffic issue. The reason that this site works for for the produce stand is because we don't allow access on SR 92. SR 92, SR 74 and North County Boulevard are all the jurisdiction of of UDOT. So we would, obviously, those access points would have to go through a process. The reason it works here is because they access off 6000. And so I would just say that moving forward, if there is an application for this, we will address that, look at access, look at traffic issues.
So Todd, that was my question, if you not went and seen and would this spot even be approved? I mean, I have a lot of safety concerns. You know, I've driven past this, there's there, usually when one car on SR 92 pulls over to go in front, multiple cars start to part, you know, get out. So we have safety concerns there that maybe if we paint it red or, and I've talked, but have we went to the specific site? Because when I was there, and I was there at 10:00 AM, I mean, just, and the cars coming down 6000 West are backing up. And so if a car's coming, going from the west, going east and turns in, they would have to wait to turn into the produce stand because the turn in is so close by the light. Have we looked at this site? Is this a site we would approve or are we talking about something that wouldn't be approved?
Technically, that that movement, if it's close enough to SR 92, is not allowed anyway because they're going across a double yellow. The traffic or, excuse me, the parking issue on SR 92, that is, that is a concern of UDOT. They do allow parking along SR 92. And so that's something that we don't, it's it's not our jurisdiction. If it becomes an issue, then UDOT would then paint the red and not allow that. So right now it is allowed, that parking is allowed.
Well, and that, because as we go further down SR 92, where the homes are at, we see cars, I can, but my question is, this site, have you went and seen this site?
I I I've seen it, I've never witnessed the the traffic issues similar to what the applicant is saying, but I am not there on a Saturday morning witnessing, you know, the peak. If if it becomes an issue, we can address it and look at it.
So what, I guess the specific site has a turn in, probably I'd say maybe 50 feet back off the light. Would that meet for the, I'm just trying to see, is that for a conditional use or for this temporary use, are we guessing that would be allowable? That's what I'm trying to understand, what's allowed?
It would be allowable as far as Highland is concerned with a right-in, right-out access. They can come in and come out, but obviously people are making the left-hand turn, it's not allowed, but we have that situation all over the city where people do turn in. In this situation across the double yellow, is it, it's it's an illegal movement, but it happens. Can we, the only thing to do would be create an actual site plan, do a right-in, right-out, but that's, we're talking about a permanent site plan. So for a temporary use, we can allow it and and continue to let them to turn in, right-in, right-out. Those that want to make the legal movement, they will continue to do that. If there were an accident, they would be cited for that movement, so.
You just looked at Chief Williams. Make sure that he was listening. Not sure he was.
Sorry, do you have a specific question about that or? I was just saying that right now, they can make the movement, but until there's an accident or you see it happen, there's nothing you can do.
That's correct.
So that double yellow extends quite a ways then, doesn't it? I have probably crossed the double yellow there.
You know, we're, you know, we're recording this.
Take me away. All right. You know where I hang out.
Well, Mayor, I would move that we approve the temporary use permit.
It's a development code amendment, so.
Can I, can we just get staff to to respond to the question? Do you have any issues with any other? I mean.
Expanding it to include other temporary uses.
If you recall, when we brought the temporary use, the council had concerns with expanding it into residential districts. So it's really up to the council if you want to expand temporary uses into residential districts.
And so my, my point is if we're doing it here, why not allow it in other places?
Right, that's, that's the question. So if you.
So I don't, I don't think that we should allow it here if we're not going to allow the other places.
Right. The policy decision that you need to make.
Okay. Nathan, my concern is maybe a little nitpicky, but throughout the city, we have kids who set up stands to sell produce, Kool-Aid, whatever. And technically based on this code, they would be in violation. How far down are we going to enforce this?
Oh, heavens, no. Not with that.
The state prohibits us from.
Yeah, nor would I ever do that.
So that would be de minimis that we wouldn't need to worry about.
Right. No, this is re, this is commercial retail operations. And last I knew, uh.
Some of those kids would consider their efforts commercial.
I'm sure they would. And my son likes to drain my pocket and do that too, so.
So Nathan, your concern once again is every one of these seven dots are all in residential zones. And so what your concern is, we're gonna say temporary use in a residential zone.
Right, so as proposed, so the applicant came in and proposed that he allow produce stands in residential zones. So we, what we did is we tried to minimize the impact, right? Instead of just saying, hey, we're gonna allow temporary uses in residential zones, we said, okay, knowing that the council previously had expressed concerns about temporary uses in all residential zones, which in some cases rightly so. We tried to narrow that request to reduce the impact. So this is what we came up with. And it's really, as Mr. Courtney said, what's the difference between a produce stand and a Christmas tree stand? Good point. The request is for produce stand, so here we are.
Or Ossler Snowy Snowcones, I could see that being a very good location.
So.
But you're out of the snow cone business.
That's right, my kids do, so that it could be Ossler Snowy Snowcones right there.
So anyways, hey, that's really where we were at.
Smith Gumballs?
They were Ossler Gumballs.
I thought it was Smith Root Canals or something like that.
Smith Family Gumball Machine. Pickleball Court.
Can I second Tim's motion?
Yes, so Tim moved to approve the amendment to the to the development code. As as per the change that was, that staff put on there, the language that staff used.
And I'll second that motion.
With that motion is only for produce stands?
Correct.
So what, one of the things that I would like to see, I I like the produce stand, I I think it actually adds to who Highland is.
Thank you.
I think Christmas tree stands would be a similar kind of thing. I think there, at some point in time, it starts feeling more commercial and all of a sudden it feels like we're putting commercial because Patterson is right across the street, kitty corner from this place, and he could put up a temporary piece there where the Longhorns are, which would fit the same concept and everything else. And so where do we really want this to end? I would like to see this start here. And I I think we ought to in our newsletter communicate after the residents and say, hey, you know, we've done this, would you care if we put, allowed more things and give some input? I I think this is a great idea here and I think it could be more than this, but I could also see go crazy and be a bad thing for Highland too.
Yeah, I think we have to.
Based on those comments, I would move the question.
So are we all in favor of voting?
Doesn't matter, I move the question.
It takes three people to agree to move the question, so.
So we have to have a majority to to move the question, actually.
No, no, we don't.
No, you don't.
Actually, I think according to Roberts, it it does require.
Majority, doesn't it?
Majority to move the question.
Well, we have been doing that wrong for all these years.
Yes, we have, and I, we have.
It's, 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 it's one of those that's not, not debatable, but it's votable.
Can't debate it, but we can vote it. So, but we all agreed to vote. Hearing no dissent, we're gonna vote. And that passes four to one.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. That ends our actionable items. We have a discussion item coming up, it's the motocross ATV restrictions.
We actually do have one more.
I'm sorry, I missed number six. Darn, I wanted to get done. So we do have another action item, trapping euthanized for urban deer control. Staff?
Thank you, Mayor, that's, that's me, Cindy. Will you put the next slide up? Thank you. So the background is that in August of 2013, City Council approved an urban deer control plan in conjunction with the Division of Wildlife Resources, or DWR. The program was for the 2013 through 2014 fall hunting season. DWR then approved the continuation of that program for the 2015 through 2017 fall hunting season. In February of 2018, City Council approved the renewal of the program for the 2018 through 2021 fall hunting season.
That would, that would be multiple seasons.
Yes, I know. You guys have been continuing it, that's the, that's the purpose of that slide. In 2019, DWR will no longer allow for the trapping and relocation of deer. However, those traps can be utilized in smaller areas where using archery equipment is difficult and unsafe. The deer would be trapped, removed from the area and then euthanized. This option was presented to me by Brian, is Brian here? Oh, yay.
Come on in, Brian.
This year as an option for, oh no, Erin, help me remember this, the subdivision.
We, we try to be a bit vague about that, Cindy.
What?
It's just in a subdivision area where this would be, was, this would be more appropriate than archery.
Right, where if there are subdivisions that are really close quarters, but a lot of deer still frequent there, this would be an option for that area. Okay, and then the next slide. The cost for the trap and euthanize option is $75 per animal. This would include the bait and the camera monitoring. This is in addition to our $2,500 per site that you approved with the program for 2018 through 2021. The total cost would depend on the amount of deer removed. In one area that was described to me that they are watching and monitoring, there's about 20 deer that frequent that area right now. And it would keep them safe, the specialists, safe as well as the neighborhoods in that area. So that's really the gist of it. Do you have any questions for me?
Cindy, this, this would apply primarily to those areas that either lack fencing or they're too congested to safely use archery then.
That's correct. Yes, thank you.
Brian, would you come up and stand? He's our.
Did I do a good job? Okay.
I have several questions if I can ask.
Yep.
Okay. How do you trap the deer?
In a clover trap. Clover trap is a mechanical trap that's netting like you'd have on a baseball, not a baseball, but a soccer net, so to speak, but in the smaller sections. Clover traps have been used for the last seven years in the state of Utah to successfully remove the deer and then we've relocated them. Due to the relocation of animals and the costs involved and the percentage of the animals' survival rate, it's such a stressful to harvest, to capture a deer and then to remove it and put it back into the mountains. The success rate has been less than 15%. And so for the cost involved in trying to trap and relocate, and the other thing is that we've come to the conclusion is the possibility of removing an animal in the city that has a chronic waste disease or a diseased animal and putting it into the mountains and infecting an entire herd isn't worth the cost of, or the risk that we're running into right now with the the city deer. City deer aren't healthy deer. A lot of times they appear to be healthy, but they're not. We've proved over the last seven years that a city deer yields about 75, 75 pounds of ground meat due to a mountain deer is 150. So when you look at the statistics of what we're moving back into the mountains, 90% of these animals have never lived in the mountain, they've been raised in the city and so put them in this, put them back in the mountain, the stress is beyond what they're capable of adapting to. Survival rate of the success comes down, if you start breaking it down, you can get the numbers up to 50%. And if you get the, you take adult females that are three years or older, you have a 50% success rate. Unfortunately, whatever goes into a trap has to be removed and relocated. And so when you take a fawn into that, it's almost an immediate death rate, and you take a buck into that, it's immediate death rate. So there's an expense going into animals that are guaranteed to die. And so when you take that hundred, you know, that 50% of adult females and put it into the equation, the equation gets pretty small. So bringing this program back around, we've proved that there's success in trapping animals and removing animals. We've relocated almost 500 animals over the last three years. So there's been a great extent going into trapping and and proving that traps can be beneficial. The downfall to the trap is just the stress that goes into the animal. So in doing that, we've proved that that trapping, there are cities right now that are exclusively just going to trap and euthanize, just to the demographics. Provo is one of the cities that we've had the hardest time with because of their demographically populated city. Just, there's so many areas in there that the animals will move through small demographics, but they're just not on inadequate enough space of ground for us to lethally remove them. And so just to avoid all interactions with the public and, and so we've, we've readopted this back in. And so with Highland City currently already operating under a COR, your COR is a COR of euthanize or of euthanization by lethal methods, right? So the division isn't requiring you guys to resubmit or reapply for your COR. They're allowing you just to adopt directly into it if you would, if you would like. Again, this is just a proposal, I just wanted to bring it to your attention. You do have a few city, you do have a few subdivisions that we have not been able to do a very adequate job of of lethally removing them due to the demographics of people and and the population of people that love the animals and versus hate. And so there's a fine line in there between what we want to remove and keep animals still inside of the city. It's not, we can't remove every animal, it's not possible.
How do you keep children and animals, dogs and things like that?
The trap isn't anything that would hurt anyone. It's, it's non, there's nothing lethal about the trap. You could walk in it and set it off, it does nothing, it just closes a gate behind you that if you're smart enough, you can walk up and lift it up and walk back out. It, it literally is just a net, it's on a metal frame that's four feet by five feet by eight feet. So we monitor it with cameras. When you guys look at these costs, your costs, we put together some numbers, you're basically paying the same price right now anyway. The difference between, we're taking, we're including the bait and camera monitoring inside of the $2,500 and then the $75 animal fee is, we've now been required by the division to take samples of every animal. So we have to provide a sample of every animal, which is an extraction, two glands inside of the neck, which just adds a whole nother process to the, before the deer can actually be harvested and donated to whoever the recipient is, we have to do these samples. And so those samples are an accrued cost. We're just.
So you deliver them to the state, but the state bears the cost of the test.
The state is bearing the cost of the test, we have to provide the test and we have to deliver the test. So we, and then deliver the animals. So that $75 is including extracting your animal, extracting the tests and giving that, taking them to the residents, correct?
So how do you euthanize the deer?
It's done with an extraction gun or a bolt gun, they call it a closed bolt gun. It's a six-inch bolt that is done through the process of crossing the eyes and lining up a certain membrane and putting a bolt into the cavity of the brain. It eliminates the animals immediately.
And so what happens to the harvested meat again?
Donated to volunteers or the the less, the less fortunate, the people that want it. We have a waiting, we have a waiting list every year that. We have a waiting list every year that we just resource those animals to inside of every city. I mean, we're removing several hundred animals a year, and so every one of those animals are going to residents or of usually of the city's first choice. And then after that, they get donated into volunteer facilities if needs be.
So what input does the citizens have into this program? I mean, I I'm sure there are people in the city that love having the deer in their backyard. I'm not one of them. I actually was a proponent in two thousand thirteen to do something because we had like a herd of deer in our yard all the time, destroying everything. I've had two big bucks chase my wife through the yard and stuff, and so I I'm not opposed to this at all. There are neighborhoods that like the deer. How do we determine which neighborhoods you'll go into and harvest the deer? Are you gonna try to take all the deer out in the city? I mean.
Can't take all the deer out of the city. It's impossible.
Right.
I'll just tell you this. Over the last five years, we've we've concentrated on one residence that continually reproduces thirty-five to forty animals a year if we were to take everyone. So you're not stopping a deer hood deer herd.
You're controlling it.
We're just trying to control managed numbers. If you guys recall back in two thousand thirteen, you were harvesting eighty-seven animals a year off of your streets, and we've cut that down to between six and ten. So pu- from a public safety perspective, according to the the division's records, that's a pretty substantial.
It's a greater than ninety percent reduction in in deer kills with cost.
Have you seen the resident deer that you used to see?
No, but the last year, it's been up again, and I think so. We live just on the very edge of the city by Fox Hollow. There are a lot of deer that come up from American Fork, which one of the advantages of having east-west corridors, I don't think they'll cross that.
Well, if they do, they got a chance.
His deer have come into my backyard, and they're eating my trees and killing my stuff.
So right now, bucks are prohibited from being harvested. How do you?
Not necessarily. We that's that's something that this guy implemented. It's not on the COR. CORs eliminate the bucks. I mean, there is a timeframe that we're not supposed to touch the bucks, and that's typically during the rutting season, just in case that we have a we have cities such as Mappleton or Springville that have neighboring mountain ranges, you know. So you have deer that are moving in.
My question is, how do we how do we prevent the bucks from going into the trap? And if they do, do you just?
You're not. You're not. And that's just that's just the problem. No, you're not gonna release an animal once it's in the trap. So it it when we when we implement the trap and and euthanize program, if an animal enters the trap, we have to euthanize it because you stressed it. You stressed it beyond probably its capabilities to continue to live. So the beauty of the trap, and I will tell you this, has allowed us to be a lot more effective in the fact that a trap runs twenty-four seven twenty-four seven. And so we're able to pre- process the timing in which we can deliver the animal so that it doesn't spoil. So once an animal's in the trap, we can keep it alive, so to speak, until we have a taker so that that process is eliminated because we only have about a thirty to forty minute window in in August and September before these animals can spoil. So you know, when you get a specialist in the stand and then he's harvesting an animal, we usually allow a five to ten minute window before we go and recover that animal. But now we're down to thirty minutes between extracting that animal and having it to a viable source to be able to take and care of so that it doesn't go to waste. So this this trap, I am in favor of it. I was against it when we first started, but I am in favor of it for the fact that it it allows us to one hundred percent utilize those animals without any cause of panic of them spoiling or going away.
So you would you would still go only where you were requested to go. We're not going to neighborhoods where they wanna.
Absolutely.
They don't want they don't want it.
No, but you gotta realize that you got, we deal with the two people that are this side and this side, right? It's a hundred percent for and a hundred percent against. The common guy in the middle doesn't, they get it. They're, yeah, I'm for something, but I don't, you know. So these are the two people we're working with, and so we have to appease this person at the same time we're appeasing this person. So we ask residents, look, if if Brother Braith or Mr. Braithwaite wants me to come to his house and harvest deer, I'm sorry, but if Mr. Smith is your next door neighbor and he loves the deer, you two work that out. That's not my job, okay? You work that out. If he comes to a common agreements that, you know, you have five or six neighbors that are your next door neighbors that love the animals, I'm sorry, Brian, you're gonna have to deal with your deer. Put up a fence. You know, it it we're not gonna, this isn't a you win, he loses. This is a common agreement that we come in and every city we sit down with, when a resident specifically wants it, he has to communicate or she has to communicate with her neighbors and have a it has to be an equal agreement. And if they are in agreement, and sometimes it's this, you can take five. You want me to come for five? I'll come for five. But when we hit five, sorry, you're gonna want me to go to ten? Nope, the agreement was five. So it is what it is. So I'm just, I wanted to make sure you guys had the opportunity, if you wanted to be the most cost effective and you wanted to be the most, you guys are on what we consider. Every city wants to get where Highland is because your cost is so minimal compared to what the other cities are paying right now because they're they're fifteen to twenty thousand dollars a year to try to get their deer herds down. But we were super aggressive four or five years ago, and we got yours to where you're tolerable. You guys are in a management state. So I would love to see every city get to this point, but it's just, I want to make sure you guys have the options, and if you choose to not, no big deal. We'll go about our business the way we have, so.
All right.
Happy to do whatever you guys would like.
Thank you, Brian.
You're welcome.
I I will open it up to anybody that would like to comment on this. Come up, you come up, stand.
It's hard for her.
Or you can ask, you can just go, yes, please.
Okay, let's let's move on.
Okay, so anybody else want to comment? Sure.
I'm Pam Erickson.
Oh, this is a private conversation they're having, so. You can go over and sit over there. If you want to sit over there, you can.
He already answered that. He already answered that. He said, if it's there, all they have to do is lift it, the gate up, and it's.
Everybody's thinking of a mousetrap. It's not a mousetrap. It's not a bear trap. It's a change that's adequate enough for their space. So say in the event that we wanted to turn it during deer loose, we have. There have been deer that we've turned loose in the past, okay? But it's it's a it's a comfortable enough environment that the animal can move around and survive. But the way the trigger is, is it's a string that when the animal has to be over a foot or two feet tall in order to even hit the trigger, and the trigger just drops a cloth key, so to speak, a cloth man in the back of it. And then they have an eight by or a ten by five by five space that they can wander in, and they ninety percent of the time they land, okay? There's a live camera that is on that cage at twenty-four seven. I have a notification and nine other specialists get a notification that we may have something in there. We see raccoons, we see skunks, ninety percent raccoons, ten percent skunks. That's still the food every freaking night, okay? So the chance that a dog walks in there, he could trigger it. I'm gonna call the residents, say, hey, who let your dog out of the trap, right? I'm not gonna do it. He can do it. In the event that a little kid gets in there, it's gonna go down in there, it takes you five minutes, the little kid's gonna have the back door open and walking out. So there are nothing, and we've been running him for seven years, had yet to catch a kid. But we have caught one dog, and it was a stray dog that was gonna be really wanting to get rid of it. They actually took him. Other than that, we've never caught a mountain sheep. We've never caught a mountain lion. We've never caught anything that shouldn't go in there. We should catch raccoons when they're close to the ground, let the gorilla walk right out. But that's how the trap works. They're very safe. Very, I mean, they're great maintenance is horrible, but other than that, they're.
Okay, great. Question?
Oh, comment.
Comment.
So, yes, I live on Sunset Hills Drive. My home backs up to the ravine that's down Bull River, that's just off Highland Boulevard, and yes, during the winter, I have ten to twelve deer that are in my yard. We've tried everything, all the deer repellent, everything. They still eat my tomatoes, my bushes, my roses. I love the deer. I think they're darling. They're wonderful. But what I see are mostly does, and I know that they produce and will keep on producing, and the population will just keep growing. And so, yes, it does need to be addressed and have some of these taken care of and taken out because I know we're kind of that love-hate relationship with with the deer there.
Thank you.
So that how do you decide which subdivision has even been responded, and how many archery licenses have been given? Because I've never seen anything in my backyard that backs up to that ravine.
That means we're doing it the right way. If you haven't seen them, that's perfect.
If it was in your yard, you would be at your request if your yard was big enough. So we only.
Pretty big.
But you would have had to request it.
Okay.
And it just like with the trap, it will come if you ask.
Okay.
And if your neighbors are in accord.
Okay.
But they also migrate, and so a neighbor could have already been asking and reducing your herd already. All your buck, by the way, are down in my yard, rubbing their antlers on my bushes and trees and killing them.
Yeah, well, I have found deer antlers after they've shed them in my yard too, so. Anyway, thank you.
Do we have another comment? Or did you wanna? Linda.
I'm kind of bipolar, Linda Walton. Okay. My father was in the mafia in Los Angeles, then he went into the military, and then he became a hunter of virtually everything on the planet. My mother was a registered nurse. She worked in a surgical center in in Los Angeles, and she had about seventy-five animals on one acre in Provo that she saved from being run over or whatever. And so I'm caught in the middle. And I live in Bull River for a good reason. We have a lot of animals. We feed animals like birds and whatnot and other things, which of course is illegal, so I shouldn't say that. But we care very much about it. That's why we live in Bull River. There's many, many good things about Bull River. My yard can look like the Hyawutis, and I don't get in trouble for not mowing it. And it's because the animals can come in and eat it along with the raccoons and whatever else happens to come in. I even like snakes. I am very concerned about the fact that our community is going to grow by one million people in the next ten years.
You're talking about Utah County?
Utah County. And because we are going to be in Silicon Valley of Utah Valley, we're gonna have a lot of people in apartments and condos with no yards and cars and buses and whatever else. We're gonna have a bigger and bigger problem in this area with this conflict of it being a beautiful Garden of Eden kind of place at one time, and now it's turning into Los Angeles. I'm very, very concerned about it. I think there should be a committee put together on it or whatever because it's gonna be like Democrats and Republicans. We're not gonna agree, but we've got to figure out a way to make it work and make it humane and take care of the animals, take care of people not running over them because it could cause injury to people when that happens. But then also, you know, if people want to go out and kill fawns, I guess that they can do that on family home evening. Thank you.
Thank you once again. I just heard about this issue today, and I've lived in Bull River also for twenty-five years. So I have done my own private studies, and I remember when we had pheasants, skunks, toads, snakes, all kinds of various species which are now gone. And they're gone because of the pollution, because of cars and the growth. And it's very, very sad to see. And every time I come to almost every single agenda, everyone's fighting for the feel of Highland, but they want don't want to do anything about it. So when we had first proposed open spaces and trail systems, there were a lot of people who had recommended migration foraging corridors with those trails. And then it takes, and then you hear about the bridges built over I-80 or other places where they adopted deer trails. So, you know, people, cars and trucks don't hit, and those have been successful programs as well. But I'm not sure about this one because they're starving already. I'd like to see if they're, I would like to see a study made. How many deer are bodies or the police pick up from dead carcasses? Because when you go up on the canyon road, it's like a slaughterhouse. Where are these animals supposed to forage? We all know that we are interfaced with wildlife, and if you move to Highland, you should know that. So at Bull River, we don't believe in the trap euthanasia or shooting our wildlife. We name them. And I don't have tulips. I don't have day lilies. I don't have roses because I know that this is food for these animals. So but to extend it to twenty twenty-one, this I'm very unsure about. I'll in the wintertime see maybe thirty to forty deer in the wintertime forage on my property or throughout Bull River. They have, you know, but then by the spring, they're up the mountain. But when we destroy all of these migration corridors and foraging, this is what urban life is, and Highland is just gone. When we're going to go to up the Highland Boulevard, they've now destroyed the foraging for all the wildlife because they like to clear cut. You know, so now we see more abundance in wooded areas, no matter what project that or home association you live in. Now, the gentleman before me, I apologize, I don't know his name. He said, if you have neighbors who disagree, but because most of the foraging areas are homeowner associations, I think that the homeowners association should also vote on these sort of things, and I can assure you Bull River would would not approve it. I I just don't know about the extension. May I, speaking of, can I extend for?
Fifteen seconds.
Okay. About the extension, because I don't know what studies have really been done. I don't know what diseases or if there's evidence of diseases. I don't know how many deer are killed by by human beings by cars. They shoot horses, don't they?
Okay, council, any other comments?
Yeah, the there is, the the discussion is not whether we extend this or not. It's whether we expand or or provide another option. It's already going to twenty twenty-one. We already proved that. And in having been on on the council, watching this whole program, this has been a really good thing for Highland. I I hate the deer ruining my backyard. I love watching them. I've got lots of pictures and lots of videos of them out in my backyard, and I'm just having to replace my trees and my bushes every year, and it's expensive, but I don't have tulips either. But, you know, I live here because I wanted a more rural life, and and I enjoy the deer, and I enjoy the horses that my neighbors have and all the other animals, so I'm I'm very content to have them. But I also saw how many deer have been killed by cars, and that drops significantly. When we thin the herd, I'm not in favor of eliminating the herds. I'm in favor of of keeping them in manageable numbers so that they don't starve in our city and that they're not getting killed inhumanely by vehicles. And the the cost in the animals' lives, the cost in fixing the cars and all the other kinds of things, the potential loss of life that could happen when deer jump out and you're driving forty miles an hour down the road, they can go through your windshield and have. And so to me, the program that we have in place is a is a very smart thing for us to have in place. It's a management program. It's not an it's not an elimination program. And I think this is another good option in the right places. I don't know that we would even use it anywhere, but it's an option where we can use it where it may be needed in some places. So if my neighbors come and ask you to eliminate the deer, I'm against it, even though I'm losing more than they are, I still like them because they fertilize my lawn really well too, in chunks, but.
I appreciate what Councilman Braithwaite is saying. I I just think we need to have the option, and the neighborhoods understand that if they don't want any deer harvesting or anything in their neighborhood like Bull River, I think it's fine that they don't have it if the majority of the people don't want it. But I I promise you, in my neighborhood, I haven't heard anybody yet say we love the deer more than not, because most of them complain to me all the time because we have seven and eight deer go through the neighborhood. I had two buck deer, as I mentioned, that was chasing my wife. You know, I mean, it's not safe for some people, and and we, I think we spent six thousand dollars repair work on a fire vehicle one time that hit a deer. So I I think it's just good to kind of manage the numbers, but have the neighborhoods have the option if they don't want it done. Yeah.
Motion or comment?
I'm ready to make a motion. I would move uh, that we um, like, um, include the trap in uh, euth- uh, euthan- euthanization process uh, in our current program.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any further discussions? Ed, did you?
No, I was gonna second it. That's fine.
All right, we're ready for vote. Brian, there we go.
It was coming.
That passes unanimously. Okay, now we're at the end of our action items and on to a discussion item. And Mr. William? I, it's only three minutes off.
Where are we at?
We're on discussion item, uh, motocross ATV restrictions.
Oh.
Is that Tara?
I can, I can take this one, Mayor.
Okay.
So the, the issue before the council to give some direction to staff is what we were to do with um, the nuisance of motocross and residential zones. First, if the council feels like it's not compatible with the residential feel and character of the neighborhood, we could do a text amendment to the development code, um, prohibiting them. That would not affect current ones. They'd be grandfathered in, but it would prevent future ones from being built. We could also regulate them through noise, dust, light, odor, and uh, do, do a code enforcement mechanism if the council uh, wishes that option, uh, maybe some direction on whether to make it a Class B, Class C, or infraction.
Can I ask some questions? I, I don't own an ATV. I've ridden in some, but I don't know what a motocross ATV is.
So they're dirt bikes. They could be four-wheelers. Um, often, from the pictures I have seen, they grade the dirt in a backyard and they ride the bikes. They create jumps, so.
Similar to the bike, um, course that we put over by.
No, the bike course.
It's, it's similar to that, except you're using motorized vehicles and so you have to have a little bit bigger area.
Oh, okay, so you're doing that sort of thing with small ATVs?
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying?
Or motorcycles.
Or motorcycles.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think you've, you've pointed out that we have the options now. If they're putting it in their own backyard, we do have the option of noise issues and, you know, dust issues that can be utilized to, to protect the neighbors.
Actually, that's one of our, so, so the residents came and asked me about this. And this is actually the second time I've had residents come approach about a motocross trail in the backyard. And, and I, and when I talk to the residents, they're not talking about where I think a, a person goes in their backyard on occasion and rides around the backyard. I think where they're talking, they've built a course or they're doing it on, on a, a weekly occasion where they are riding back their heavy riding.
In their own backyard.
In their own backyard. So what they, you know, for instance, we have one resident that has built, they have an acre and a half lot on about the last half, uh, acre, they went and built up great big mounds of dirt. And we see about six, I think it was three or two or three motocross motorcycles actually jumping in the air and you can hear them pretty loud. So you're, if this is your backyard, I recognize we need to be sensitive to someone's property rights, but we also need to be sensitive to those of noise. And when we looked in the ordinance, and this is where I think Tim might help, we couldn't find, there is, I think if, if as long as it's from seven AM to ten PM at night, they can do their noise. I, and that was where I looked at Tim, cause we very first went, what's the nuisance? Is there a nuisance ordinance? Is there a noise? There's their dust, and we couldn't find anything to help guide us, uh, to help these residents that may be having this nuisance that's going on.
Now, there is one for dogs, so dogs can bark, but if there's a dog that's barking incessantly day in, day out, you could complain about that. But there's no provision for complaining about motor, motorized vehicles making noise sunup to sundown. And it, the noise is quite loud. And it, it does stir up some dust, uh, but it's, to me, it's a noise issue and I.
Well, I think we gotta, we gotta take a look at what we currently have on the books and.
And we have, and, and based on what I have seen, what I would recommend is bringing back to the council a proposed ordinance. Kind of beefs up our nuisance ordinance.
It, it's just that maybe one of the hazards of living in a big lot community.
Yep.
Well, Tim, let's, let's look at it as a personal thing. If, and I recognize we all own one acre lots and, and so we have to be careful, cause I've had my son, I have a pasture, you know, with the horses, and he'd go get on our forewater and ride out there and go, hey, he did that probably on occasion of, once a month. He'd go out there for maybe even a half hour, an hour. I don't think that's what I'm trying to, you know, I, I think we gotta be careful not stopping that. You know, but I, I think where you have someone that's built a motocross or that they're continually, if you have someone that has health concerns, so you, you know, we looked that there might be some that have health concerns or in that home next to it. So, so the very first contact was about a year ago. I had someone that was dying of cancer and they says, my husband cannot sleep, cause essentially we have these motorcycles just riding and riding in the backyard. They says, have you talked to the neighbor? And, and, and they said they had it, hadn't, and I actually went and talked to the neighbor and I think they, the mom was maybe not aware of the situation and that seemed alleviated. This, the neighbor seemed to have went and talked to the neighbor and then they continued to build the motocross backyard track. And it, this is, this is a full-on motocross thing that you'd go out to Seven Mile Pass to do.
But I think what Tim is, is proposing is to take a look at it and see how we can maybe modify it to some extent to take care of that issue.
And, and I, and I think that's what I'm hearing from the council, so I will bring back to you uh, something, a, a new ordinance that will cover nuisances.
Well, not necessarily a new ordinance, but maybe an amended ordinance.
Uh, Tim, is there any relief for the current property owner that's raised the issue?
Well, there's, there are public nuisances and private nuisances. Certainly every landowner has the right to the quiet enjoyment of their real property, but um, in, in, in competing interests, those things can be handled civilly. Uh, in terms of public nuisances, when the city adopts something, then we could send a code enforcement officer out and they can investigate and look at the situation and see how egregious it is.
We don't have any code enforcement officers.
Oh, but we do.
So, so Tim, if I, if I understood you correctly, they, their option is to handle the, the situation in civil court then?
Well, that's one option. Another option is you could do a, a, a city abatement. You could do um, a misdemeanor or an infraction in justice court. That's often how nuisances are treated.
You know, this is a funny uh, topic. Uh, I, I have a, a puppy that I've had now for the last couple of years. And prior to this, we hadn't had a dog because of a number of reasons, but one is, I don't like cleaning up dog poop.
I've got some deer poop you can clean up.
But I have neighbors that let their dogs run around and I'm cleaning up my own dog poop and their dog poop. And so I called our, our local uh, animal enforcement folks. And, and so I think we have the situation resolved, but that's not the kind of thing I wanna do. I wanna, you know, let people live in their neighborhood, but you know, you say, go talk to the neighbor and, which of course I have. And they still let their dogs loose and go out and do their, their thing. So it's a, it's a tough issue. And sometimes we have to, you know, to take, take action, take some action. So it's, it's interesting. It's, we just have to be careful how we do it.
Thank you.
Uh, Tim, just, just for clarification, I apologize, but is there action the city can take to help the residents? And that, that's where I'm somewhat confused.
Today? Today?
Apparently they want something done during the day, and I guess that's the problem.
So they, they have, there, I, I've seen a video where you've got five motorcycles jumping and, and, and it's close to the fence and it was like, wow, they could go over the fence. I mean, it was above the fence.
So currently the only option is civil court.
And they.
And even that.
Yeah, I don't know what you would.
You don't know what the basis would be to make the claim?
Yes.
Maybe we can't pursue some type of public nuisance without modifying the ordinance, and the ordinance would not be retroactive.
Right, so, so we would be discussing an ordinance that we could enforce going forward.
But that, but as, you know, Kurt indicated, sometimes you go and talk to the neighbor and they, they don't do anything.
Right, which it seems like is the case here.
Ignore ordinance, w- we could enforce the day it was passed or the next day. Go, and so, but if, if we were exclusively to say you can't put a motocross track in your backyard, then existing ones would be grandfathered in. So that wouldn't, we could do that anyway and prevent the issue going forward, but for the existing ones, we couldn't. But the noise, the nuisance thing could could, would be used to mitigate those issues.
So that, that's the most likely scenario then, is address it through noise or light? Are they doing it at night? With lights?
Oh. Now, are there any residents here that would like to share their perspective on that? So we have several. Um, we'll start, one, two, three, four.
And. So I'm David, David Bradshaw. I'm um, a neighbor where the uh, motocross track is currently installed. I share about a hundred and fifty uh, feet of, 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 of fencing with them. Uh, they, they built this this uh, summer. They, there was a family there that used to live and they would ride their ATVs and motorcycles occasionally. They had some dirt in the backyard, but uh, this family came in and they took it to a whole nother level. And now there's a full-blown dirt track in the backyard. Uh, it's literally, they have jumps literally five feet from my fence. When they jump, they jump clear up above the fence and scares my wife to death. It looks like they're coming over the fence when they go up there. Uh, I'm worried about liability issues. If one of those kids runs into that concrete fence there and hurts himself, am I going to be liable because I own the fence? It's my property line. Is the city gonna be liable because they didn't step in and do something to stop this? So I think there's a real liability issue involved here. Uh, just to give you some perspective on, on when it goes on, it can go on at any time, day or night. Uh, they prefer this week, being out in the evening at about nine, between nine and ten because of the uh, the cooler temperatures at night, which is understandable. The other issue I'd like to, to bring up is somebody mentioned it may not be a significant health hazard, and I would, I would beg to differ with that. I'm a pulmonary physician. I deal daily, all day long, with patients with airways disease that's exacerbated by dust exposure and fumes. You get, I can go out in the backyard and I've got a barbecue out back there and it's just coated with dust. I clean it off, the next week I go out and it's coated with dust again. Uh, there is a significant uh, uh, issue with dust. Uh, they did put some sprinklers in there, I think, to, uh, to cool their track down a little bit. However, even when they're not riding out there, we get a little bit of dust or a windstorm comes through and it just blows it right to, to my house. And I'd be happy to show you some very dramatic pictures of that happening, you know, just this, just this summer. So I would, I would ask that you consider uh, this. It seems to meet all the criteria of a public nuisance. Uh, we are no longer able to enjoy our backyard whatsoever when they're, when they're riding out there. We just can't even go out there. Even when we're in the house with the doors closed and the windows closed, we can still hear the motorcycles. It's uh, it's, and we've got the dual pane, uh, energy efficient windows and everything, so uh, it's, it's really, you know, we moved to Highland, we came here because of big lots and, and peace and quiet, lack of vehicular traffic, all the things are in the R-140 zone description, and now we've lost that and, and want to do something to get that back. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Uh, my name's, excuse me, John Timothy. I'm neighbors with Dr. Bradshaw. We share a boundary with the neighbors in question. So there has been a video that's been sent around. Has everyone had a chance to see it?
I haven't yet.
I, I, it's, I sent it out earlier this morning.
Oh, that's why I haven't seen it. I have to work during the day.
Ouch.
We'll let the council watch. I, it's, it's self-explanatory. I've seen it.
Can I play a quick ten-second audio clip?
Sure.
Just to help illustrate um, what uh, what we're going through? If you can get it here. Um, I'm gonna try to adjust the volume so that you can get uh, perspective of how, excuse me, how noisy it is just from our back deck. David is much closer than I am. So what you hear here, you can imagine it's gonna be probably twice as bad from his backyard. So I'm gonna just go ahead and play it. Anyway, that's just a very short clip. That's a two, two-stroke motorcycles going at the same time, racing up and down the fence line that David brought up. Um, and they go all over the place on the track as, as well. They uh, they do it all the time. They've been doing it since last fall, uh, when they moved in. Even after I approached the homeowner and conveyed my uh, dismay about the whole thing, he basically ignored me and continued to do things. It actually got worse, even to the point where he's built the track now. But they, like David said, we can't enjoy our yards. We can't go out and really do anything because of this. Um, but we came here too for some peace and quiet.
Okay.
And that's what we would like to have. So please consider uh, something that will help us out. That's all I've got for right now.
Thank you.
I, I have a quick question before you sit down. Do we know if these are his family members or is he letting people use it as a business? And are there some other things that we could pursue of a commercial business?
No business, as far as I know. Um, there are, there's one neighbor boy that comes over all the time. Um, there have been family members over there. They've had family parties where there's been multiple bikes. Um, so in some ways, for those people that, that do ride, they kind of see it, oh, we can all go to this house and we can ride and. But even amongst themselves, there's three, three boys that are out there riding on a regular basis. And they're young, which means they're gonna, if they don't leave the house till they're eighteen, they're gonna be riding for years to come. And so we, like I said, I talked with him and was ignored basically, and so this is the next step, is to kind of come and see what we can do to, to help us enjoy our home.
Thank you.
Sad, sad that you have to come here next. It's too bad it couldn't be worked out.
I, I would strongly favor modifying the ordinance, but.
Yes. Is that your name?
Hi, Jennifer Knowles.
Say that again?
Jennifer Knowles.
Okay.
I live in the same neighborhood. I don't live right next, I live two houses away from that property. So when I'm in my house, I, I'm not bothered. If I walk around the block, I do hear it and I smell it because there's so many bikes, you can just smell the exhaust and there is a lot of dust. Um, the main thing that I wanted to come up and say is this, that I know both of these families and I know the kind of people they are. They're not whiners or complainers. They keep to themselves. They're very kind people and um, that, that, they're not the kind of people that just wanna make an issue out of nothing. I could tell you that these kids are riding their motorcycles for hours and hours a day. This isn't just, you know, like, oh, go out for half an hour. This is hours and hours every day. And except for when the people are on vacation, that's the only time they have peace. So if they want to, I know that these neighbors wanted to have a party in their backyard the other day and they couldn't because of the motorcycle, so they had to go inside. So they really are not able to enjoy their yard and and I guess for me, I, I was sitting in my backyard the other day and I was thinking, oh my gosh, if my neighbor right there that I can see, and I have three quarters of an acre, but you know, so it's a big yard, but it's not big enough to have a motorcycle track because if my neighbor had a motorcycle track right there, I would go nuts. I would just move, is what I would do. And I know they've talked about moving and I don't think that that's right, that they should have to move. Um, and I know that John had, John Timothy had researched some of the ordinances in some of the neighboring cities. Um, and I know that John had, John Timothy had researched some of the ordinances in some of the neighboring cities. And that there are some, um, things that they, they have on their books about, you know, preventing this kind of invasion. And I do know, I do know that John, um, very kindly went over to the new family and asked if they would even just compromise. And like maybe, you know, just not do it all the time or maybe not on Sunday or, you know. But they weren't up for any kind of compromise, which is unfortunate, but sometimes people are like that. But I would challenge you guys to think about, like, if that was going on in your backyard. Cause you're not gonna fill this room with people complaining about this issue because there's only, you know, not very many people surrounding their property. But it could happen to anybody. Um, so anyway, that's what I wanted to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments? Go ahead and pile on.
Well, just real quickly, my name is Michael Bradshaw. I, I, I would just, uh, maybe challenge you a little bit about this idea that something immediately can't happen. This, uh, appears to be a public nuisance. Whether or not, uh, you have something as specific as you, you need, I would challenge, uh, you and the police force to see what this really is. It's, this noise is just, it's, it's, it's to the point where it, it's not allowing neighbors to, uh, be able to, uh, enjoy their, uh, quality of life in their, their homes. It's a public nuisance today. So, yeah, you know, there's lots of different types, uh, uh, of laws that probably need to be enacted. But I think there's something you can do today. And I would suggest we try to do, before we leave here today, decide.
We can't do any, it's not an action item, so we can only discuss, we can't.
Well, but, but I, but, but I, I, I would suggest that the police department, we have the chief of police here today. Could, 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 uh, hearing what is going on, uh, would be able to identify this as a public nuisance today. And that's all I have to say. Thanks for your time.
You're welcome. Uh, Nathan, just a quick question. What noise ordinances do we have in place now and would they be applicable to apply currently?
So, uh, when this came up and Kurt asked us to look at it, I asked, uh, Tim to, uh, review what we had and he has that, uh, report for you.
I'll just have to pull it up here, it's just in our code.
I figured that'd be better than me trying to remember it off the top of my head.
You know, while he's looking that up, one of the things that I reflect back on my life is how much I probably tortured my neighbors when I was a kid and didn't realize what I did to my neighbors. I wanna go back and apologize to all of them for all the stupid things I did late at night, you know, lighting fireworks or riding motorcycles around and driving them crazy. And it's, and it's real. I'm not, I'm not downplaying what you're living with. I'm sure that my neighbors, uh, didn't appreciate some of the things I did.
So, uh, in, in chapter eight, uh, title eight, oh four, oh sixty, it says, air pollution nuisance. This would relate to what we heard about the exhaust fumes. No person shall cause or permit the discharge from any source whatsoever of such quantities of air contaminants or other materials, which cause a nuisance to any person or to the public.
What about the noise one?
Hold on.
It doesn't mention any decibel level. It just says, uh, objectionable and bothersome between the hours of 10 PM and 7 AM.
So we also have a fugitive dust ordinance. So what I would like to do, I mean, this was adopted in nineteen eighty-eight. So I would like to update it since it's been thirty years? Twenty-one years?
No, it's thirty.
Eighty-eight.
Yeah, I've been here since eighty-nine.
Don't ask a lawyer to do any math. Yeah. Um, the, you should, uh, no person shall cause, suffer, allow or permit the admission of fugitive particulate matter. So we, uh, we could, you know, l- look at this and talk about the airborne particles of, of the dust. And then, um, council member Dennis, do you have the noise one pulled up in front of you?
Uh, I did, I just went to, uh, the hazardous material section. So I don't know.
So I, in eight sixteen, you have the nuisance generally.
Are any of those defined as infractions or misdemeanors?
So I don't see a classification in the nuisance one. Let me see if it's classified elsewhere.
Tim, while you're doing that, what is it you need from us to help you out moving forward? Was it your?
Just us saying, do it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't need, I don't need anything further than just the go ahead.
Yeah.
Sounds like we're about that tonight.
Yeah.
So I'll make this a top priority.
I'm just looking at the cleanup and recovery. Uh, it talks about Highland City, uh, is authorized, or it says, or authorized contractors authorized, but not required to mitigate the effects of any hazardous material unlawfully released, discharged or deposited upon or into any property or facility with, property or facilities within the city. Can we approach this with the dust issue? I mean, if, that's definitely hazardous material has been discussed by, uh, Dr. Bradshaw. I'm just wondering if we can approach it or, or a circuitous round.
What we would need for enforcement is, um, I mean, to create, generate some reports, some dates, a level. Because to enforce this in court, you have to have testimony. You have to have fact witnesses who've personally observed it come and testify of exactly what happened. It can't be anything generalized. It can't just be, this is awful, this is really loud. We need, uh, specific facts. And so that's how that we can, uh, assist in preparing a case. The, the exact noise ordinance is in eight sixteen one hundred. Noise, it's unlawful for any person or group to create or permit any noise regardless of origin or definition that is so loud as to be objectionable and bothersome. Here's the problem, between the hours of 10 PM and 7 AM. So that's, that's the nighttime. That was adopted in nineteen ninety-five and amended in two thousand and six.
So one thing we could ask the neighbors to do is to start keeping records. So if you would just keep log, uh, motorcycles were present seven AM to ten PM. Or just so that when this gets passed, we can immediately go and say, boom, you're, this is a pattern. Um, that would be really helpful. Uh, I know it's extra work for you, but I apologize for that. But that would certainly be helpful if you could each individually keep logs, videos would be great.
But I think mayor, we're gonna have to be a little bit more specific, uh, than it just, it's a loud noise on a certain day.
Well, and, and he's.
That's what we're gonna have to identify is, and that's where I think Tim needs to help us a little bit on the wording of it. And I, and I think if it's a nuisance that helps us if it's continually going, like, cause, like I said, we're not trying to stop the kid that went around in his backyard one time or he's doing it occasionally. We're trying to get something that's a nuisance that's ongoing, at least for me, where I'd be looking for.
I think once, once we have an ordinance in place, then we can ask, I think, our residents to keep track.
I, if they'll keep track now, it would be helpful.
How would it be helpful?
There's, there's, there's two things that are, we're talking about. Earlier we talked about helping in, uh, empower the ordinances that we have to be better. But what I just heard a minute ago was a request, can we do anything with our current ordinances that we could move forward? I think that's been our last dialogue. And I think that what, um, our attorney stated was we need some evidence of it. And he's asking to accrue some of that.
Evidence has to violate the current ordinance.
And that's what he's saying. He believes that it can't.
I don't think they're violating it after 10 o'clock, but if they are, then we need to take action there.
So what I can do is I can bring back to our next meeting a proposed ordinance amended to municipal code. If we're going to do any zoning text amendment, that'll have to go to planning commission. If we're gonna be regulate that, that aspect of it. So we'll have to do this in two parts.
And I think we also have to be careful because we have some areas in the city that are designated as motocross and four wheel drive. And, you know, those are, those are things that, that, um, we wanted to encourage our kids to have something to do. So, you know, what I hear once in a while is, look, you're gonna have a conservation ordinance. You can't water on certain days, but the city is constantly violating that, that rule. So we wanna make sure that we, if we put something in place, it's something we can all feel good about.
So, uh, action item is, uh, there's no action, we're just, you have permission to draft the ordinance. Anything else?
Mayor, just one quick question for Todd. Uh, how do we monitor dust, uh, and those, that type of, of issue when we, around the construction site or in a residential area? I mean, how, how would the Bradshaws be able to monitor how much dust is filling over into their home?
So with, with construction projects, we require that they have a water truck on site, that they, anytime that wa- uh, land is disturbed, that they water it down. Um, in fact, we've recently had a project up in the northwest part of the city that we, we constantly had windstorms. That, uh, the developer actually was required to put a chemical in the water to help, uh, crust up the top surface because it just wasn't keeping up. But that's what we require of developments is that they immediately put water down, create that crust that we're not having, that just the powder dust that, that will easily blow away. You, you can't, you can't 100% fix the problem, you just can't. But in this situation, um, if we were to go and say that we're, we're going to restrict you because of the dust issue, they could immediately just water it and, and, and technically not be violating the dust issue. But obviously they don't, they ride it, they ride it, they ride it because it is creating the dust film. And so we, with, with our developments, we have gone to neighbors and looked and said, okay, we have a dust problem and, and required that they water more. Um, and developers will comply and put more water down and try to fix the dust issue. But we do not have a specific, you know, this is the amount that we look for.
I mean, can the city start doing that tomorrow if there's a dust issue to go in and at least mitigate the dust issue?
Yeah, we could go in and say that you have a dust issue and, and fix it. And if they could.
On private property, we have.
On private, um, yes.
See, that's what I don't, I'm not sure that we do.
Well.
I mean, they're, they're excavating the soil. To me that becomes.
Cause it is, obviously they're violating the neighbor's ability to enjoy their property. So that's, that's a problem.
We would have to look to see if it, if it applies to private properties. Uh, currently the ordinance is written for construction.
Right, and what we're talking about is private residential property.
Correct.
But, but again, that they're excavating the ground to make these jumps and everything else.
Right, we would have to look at the ordinance and see if that applies.
It's not a typical residential arrangement.
Right.
Right.
I mean, it would be nice to pursue as mu- as much as we can to, to at least mitigate some of the issues. At least they wouldn't have dust on there.
I think it, you know, it's definitely worth, you know, somebody official going out and, and talking to these folks and saying, look, if you don't resolve this, the city is going to put in place some ordinances that you really won't like.
Just so you know, I actually did stop in and knock on the home, the parents weren't there. I gave him my, my city council card to ask him to please call. Cause I also wanted them to know about the meeting tonight. I didn't want it just to be a, a one-sided. I wanted them to have the opportunity to share what they, their feeling was on it. But I'm also okay stopping back in to try to talk to them to see, you know, if we can try to get something put together for the residents. That might be the fastest is to have them stop because that's, it's their desire to do such.
Could help. Ready for a motion?
Uh, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, adjourn.